Live in five, four, three.
Good evening. Welcome to North Idaho College February 18th Board of Trustees Meeting. At this time, I'd like you to all rise for the salute to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And keeping with our tradition, I'd like to ask trustee Howard to review our mission statement before we get started this evening.
With or without the modification that I had at last name?
Either way.
North Idaho College meets the diverse educational needs of students, employers, and the northern Idaho communities it serves through a commitment to student success, educational excellence, community engagement, and lifelong learning and earning.
Thank you, trustee Howard. We appreciate that. It's well worth mentioning each time so we can stay focused on the mission. At this time, I would ask if the board has reviewed the minutes, if there are any questions or adjustments to the minutes. Hearing none, minutes have been accepted. And I understand we have no one that has signed up for public comment. And so that takes us right on to celebrating success. Our Disability Support Services, Tim Gerlitz. Welcome.
Okay, thank you so much, Madam Chair, Board of Trustees, President Dunlap, Attorney Mark Lyons, President Cabinet, and special guests. My name's Tim Gerlitz and I'm the North Idaho College Director of Student Disability Counseling and Health Services. It's a tremendous honor and a privilege to be before you this evening at my hometown college, celebrating the success of Disability Support Services and the success of students with disabilities here at North Idaho College and the other North Idaho higher education colleges and universities. I'd like to share a brief personal story with you first. My mother passed away about 15 years ago, but when she was 16 years old in 1953, she contracted polio a year before the polio vaccine was discovered. Her condition was critical and she was admitted to a children's hospital for a year where she received treatment. When she was discharged at age 17, she wore full hip and leg braces and used Canadian crutches to walk. She was bound and determined to complete her high school degree and re-enrolled in school after her discharge. The high school had three floors and no elevator. There were no curb cutaways in 1953, no ramps, no handrails, no handicapped accessible bathrooms, no special chairs or seating. There was no such thing as handicap parking and no such thing as ADA compliant doors or hallways or buildings for that matter. There were no special academic accommodations for students with disabilities and basically there wasn't much available and the struggles of these citizens were largely ignored. People were fearful that they could contract polio from mom even though she wasn't, of course, contagious, so no one would help her get around. They didn't want to come into physical contact with her and so she would literally drag herself, crutches and books, step by step, up each flight of stairs to get to her classroom. Mom did complete her high school degree, but not without tremendous struggle and challenge. Fast forward 19 years, and in 1973, the Rehabilitation Act was passed by Congress and signed by President Nixon. This act prohibits discrimination against people with disabilities and the passage of these federal laws was the first real attempt in the United States to provide protections for citizens with disabilities. But there wasn't a lot of teeth in this particular act and people with disabilities continued to struggle with access in their communities and their civil rights. It wasn't until 1990 that Congress passed and President George H.W. Bush signed the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990 into law. The ADA, as it's known, is a wide-ranging civil rights law that prohibits discrimination based on disability. And this particular act did come with some legal teeth. Title II of the ADA requires public entities that accept federal monies, such as colleges, to provide academic accommodation, services, and access assistance to students with disabilities. And all colleges have an office just like North Idaho College's Disability Support Services. Amendments to the ADA passed in 2008 further strengthen those laws, protecting citizens with disabilities, but there is still so much more work to do. So, in the lifetimes of many people in this room, we have in fact literally lived through historic times when landmark federal laws were passed that finally gave protections to citizens with disabilities. According to the Department of Education, 10 to 12 percent of the student body on any college campus in the United States have disabilities that would make them eligible for services at Disability Support Services, but only about 1 and 1/2 to 3 percent of those actually seek assistance. And here at NIC, we serve about 3 to 4 percent of the student body at any one time. NIC Disability Support Services provides services to 250 to 300 students with disabilities each semester. DSS also provides services to students attending the other North Idaho higher education campuses and colleges. Assistance and access are extended to the general public attending events and activities at our college campuses as well. When you say the word disability, what comes to mind for most people are the visible disabilities. Visible disabilities are chronic health conditions that we can visibly witness. But people in wheelchairs or blind citizens using canes and service animals are examples of visible disabilities, but not every disability is visible. In fact, the majority are not. Invisible disabilities are those that are not immediately apparent. For example, people may have mental health disorders, cognitive dysfunction, brain injury, learning disabilities, debilitating pain, fatigue, vision and hearing impairments, and more. The Invisible Disabilities Association of America states, "The bottom line is that everyone with a disability is different with varying challenges and needs, as well as abilities and attributes. Thus, we should learn to listen with our ears instead of judging with our eyes." The Americans with Disabilities Act defines disability as a physical or mental impairment that substantially impairs one or more major life activities and the act gives some examples of what those major life activities are. For example, they are but not limited to caring for oneself, performing manual tasks, seeing, hearing, eating, sleeping, walking, standing, lifting, bending, speaking, and it goes on. So let's take a brief look at the types of disability students present with at North Idaho College. 75 percent of our students serve, present with two or more diagnoses and in fact, 25 percent, 25 percent with four or more diagnoses in our office. 33 percent of our students have anxiety disorders. And this is not test anxiety. This is diagnosed general anxiety disorder, anxiety that impacts their daily living. 24 percent are diagnosed with depressive disorders such as major depression, dysthymia. 23 percent have a variety of complex medical conditions. 23 percent are diagnosed with attention deficit hyperactive disorder. And almost 20 percent of our students are diagnosed with neurological disorders such as traumatic brain injury, cerebral palsy, and multiple sclerosis, just to name a few. Students with learning disabilities account for 10 percent of the students we work with. 10 percent of our students are diagnosed with post-traumatic stress disorder and we see a high incidence of PTSD and traumatic brain injury with the veterans we serve in our office. More and more students who have severe and persistent mental illness such as schizophrenia and bipolar disorder are also pursuing degrees. As medications and therapies have improved over the last several decades, we are ecstatic that these citizens are able to manage their bothersome symptoms and enter college. About 6 percent of our students are diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder. Finally, we work with students who are hearing impaired and deaf, those who are sight impaired and blind, and with students who have been diagnosed with cancer or who struggle with other medical conditions. Disability Support Services provides a variety of services to students who have disabilities. After we verify the disability, we conduct an individualized assessment with the student to identify what accommodations and services would be most helpful to them. Then we monitor their progress and work closely with the student and their instructors to fine-tune their services. Students with disabilities must perform the same assignments and complete the same tests as any other student in their class, different than the laws in secondary and elementary education. Also, accommodation should not and cannot compromise the core integrity of the class or the instruction. Basically, an accommodation should cancel out the disability-related barriers for the student and level the playing field for them. I'm a veteran, as many are in this room, and we have a saying that we don't want to hand out, but a hand up is just fine with us. Here are some examples of academic accommodations that might be approved for students, but it's really a small list. We have many more. Interpreter services for the deaf and hard of hearing. Audiobooks, electronic textbooks for blind and sight impaired students. Extended time for tests and assignments, personal needs breaks. Recorders, note takers, and electronic capture technology. Flexibility in attendance for some of our students who have medication issues or need brief periods of hospitalization, math accommodations, and more. A little bit about the staff of Disability Support Services. This I would like to introduce Ty Caraway, our Senior Administrative Assistant and Intake Specialist. She's usually the first person a student with a disability comes into contact with in our office. And I would like to say it's not easy asking for help. Any of us in the room who have sought counseling for ourselves or have reached out for help, it's a difficult prospect and challenging to say the least. So really, for students to enter our office is no easy task for them. And I would like to say Ty is empathic, extremely helpful, and works with students through the application and service process. Next in our office is Ryan Scott. He's one of our access specialists, works primarily with students who have been diagnosed with learning disabilities. And he provides services to students who have visual impairments or who are blind. Ryan is also our assistive technology guru and he frequently pulls rabbits out of the hat when he's faced with challenging academic accommodation issues and believe me, we have plenty of those. He is at the forefront of Office of Civil Rights Assistive Technology related directives and champions a cause of accessibility across campus. We're very grateful to have Ryan on staff. Gina Nakarado is also an access specialist. Her expertise is in the area of psychiatric disabilities. She works closely with both the students, their community support professionals, and their families to help them succeed. And believe me, Gina has many, many stories of student success despite students struggling with very bothersome symptoms, medication adjustments, and brief periods of hospitalizations. Finally, on staff is Lindsay Meyer. She is also an access specialist specializing in autism spectrum disorders and she brings a wealth of private sector experience with her to the college setting. She also works with our students who have neurological disorders and other medical conditions. Lindsay is empathic and caring and always goes the extra mile for all the students she works with. She also researches new technologies and works closely with Ryan Scott to identify equipment and services that would be most helpful to our students. I could have filled many slides with our DSS partners, but I would like to point out a few. There are many positive relationships. I could, would like to highlight Vice President of Instruction Lita Burns and Dean of General Studies, Larry Briggs for their endless energy and commitment to students with disabilities. We've met with Lita and Larry often to discuss student strategies and service procedures and I want to thank them from my heart for their commitment and time. Faculty chairs and instructors have been incredible to work with. In addition to their instruction in faculty-related workloads, they've committed endless hours working with our office and with students with disabilities, helping them to succeed. Last year, the math department met with us and helped develop a specific math accommodations policy that broke new ground and has been adopted by a number of other colleges since. Director of e-Learning Thomas Scott and Library Director George McGallister have put out red carpets for students with disabilities and are very motivated working with our office to approve access and process. Steve Rupel and his staff have been exceptional and we appreciate their expertise and commitment as well. And in addition to the work and assistance from all NIC staff, I'd like to thank Vice President of Student Services Grayden Stanley for holding quality access and service to the highest standards for students with disabilities. Finally, I'd like to acknowledge President Dunlap and Vice President of Communications Mark Browning for supporting our electronic information and technology priorities on campus. We have a number of current projects. Here are just a few of those regarding electronic information and technology advances. Our neighboring state, Montana State University, recently had an Office on Civil Rights legal action regarding students who are unable to access electronic media on their campuses. It lacked captioning technology. Their websites were not accessible to them. And there was a significant finding by the Office on Civil Rights which has resulted in quite a response by the university. And we're learning from that response. We're studying that legal framework very carefully and I can tell you we're appreciative of the NIC Foundation Grant for Web Accessibility, which was a partnership with the Communications Division here. And we now have software that's testing our NIC website, showing us areas where it is not accessible, that we need to make improvements and change it. We are working on video captioning technology. Very expensive to do this. It's between $2.50 and $5.00 per minute of captioning. No easy task for students who need that capability. Assistive tech improvements, the NIC Foundation Grant also provided funds to us this year for touchscreen technology. We have students, for example, who have cerebral palsy who don't have an ability to manually touch keyboards or manipulate mice on a computer. One student literally has a hat with a pointer glued to the hat and she uses that to touch keys, to try to manipulate things. This touchscreen technology will bring a really wonderful environment to her and it's pushing our assistive technology lab in a great direction as we continue to look at what's available. We're trying to use video remote interpreting services, so instead of having a live interpreter, if the student doesn't mind, we actually pipe in an interpreter on a laptop. So this could be an interpreter anywhere in the United States, who's on a video camera, can hear real-time the instructor presenting and can interpret on a laptop screen to the student. It's more private and it seems to work pretty well. We're also, of all things, trying to use a 3D printer technology because some of our blind students have to feel graphs in a book. When we turn a book into an electronic version, you can imagine charts and graphs don't render. How do you translate that information to a person who's blind? We're playing around with 3D printing technology that can render those into a tactile environment for those students. Our long-term goal is universal design. Universal design refers to a broad spectrum ideas meant to produce buildings, products, and environments that are inherently accessible to everyone, whether they have a disability or not. In fact, the curb cutaway came out in the early 60s and it was for individuals in wheelchairs, but quickly, that technology meant, that accommodation meant that people in strollers, people with size 13 shoes, people who needed the comfort of being able to go down a gradual grade to the street and safely cross the street, it hit worldwide. That's an example of a universal design element. That's what we'd see in the future is that it doesn't matter if you're disabled or not. You walk into an environment and everything is accessible to you. Finally, the real celebration of success is about our students. We want students with disabilities to succeed and complete their certificates and degrees. Unfortunately, nationally, only 16 percent, that's 1/6, actually complete their studies. That number should bring a tear to our eyes. It takes a tremendous amount of work and planning before a student with a disability takes their first step onto a college campus, not to mention anybody taking their first step on campus. There is too much at stake not to provide the highest levels of support and encouragement to them during their academic journey. Together, community, family, and college will make a difference. We're committed to helping these students succeed. Though our services are confidential and we don't disclose information about a student's disability, we did have a student agree to share his story with you tonight and he is here in the audience. And that would be Dexter Olmstead. This is what Dexter wrote. "Three years ago," and I might say that's three years ago tonight, this accident happened to Dexter. This is the anniversary of that accident. "I was involved in an automobile accident. I suffered a traumatic brain injury and my parents were told I would never walk or talk again, if I ever even survived the night. Through hard work and perseverance, I am recovering. A big part of my recovery is my ability to attend classes at NIC. Against the advice of many professionals, I started NIC in the fall of 2013 using a wheelchair. I now get around campus on crutches. The desire to get to my classes and be more like my classmates has pushed me to continually get better. While I still have physical limitations and struggle daily with memory problems, the staff and student body at NIC have embraced me. The support I get from everyone on campus makes every day easier. With the assistance from DSS and support of the professors, I am on track to graduate with an AS in engineering in spring 2016." And we have Dexter in the back of the room tonight. Dexter is one of 250 students that we're serving this semester. His story is incredible and his spirit to drive to succeed is so inspiring. There are many, many more stories of drive and success here at NIC and from the bottom of my heart, I'd like to thank everyone here for their commitment, support, love, and encouragement of each student who takes their first step onto this campus. Thank you for taking the time to celebrate the success of Disability Support Services tonight and for celebrating the courageous journeys of students with disabilities. Thank you.
Wonderful. Tim, board, do we have any questions or comments for Tim?
Yes.
Just a comment, Tim. Like you, I grew up in a household with a disabled sister and back in the 60s, it was very difficult even for a sibling to be able to explain what it was and that notion that you could catch this or whatever. And so, and one of the things as I'm reflecting as you're telling the story, that the number one tool, the best weapon that we have is the education. Thank you for the education. Thank you.
Board, any other comments? Mr. Banducci?
Well, Tim, I think you're doing a great job and I personally appreciate the help you've given my family. As you know, I have a son that we've had some challenges with and working through at the college that he's attending and they're not nearly on the ball as we are here. And I appreciate the guidance and expertise that you've given us and helped us as we've worked through some of our issues. And I know that you're doing a great job taking care of the kids here. And to see Renee and her son here is very exciting. I don't see Kyle tonight, but it's great to have you guys here. Very proud of your son. He's come a long way. Thank you for the great work you're doing.
You're welcome and thank you.
Any other comments, board? Mr.?
Sir.
Mr. Howard?
Tim, I guess many of us, I'm sure there are people in the audience that have experiences with individuals in their family or people that they know that have suffered from some disability, some very profound and some not so profound. But in my own experience in my family, I have a grandson that's profoundly injured. And when he was first born and was so profoundly injured, you thought there was not much that education could provide for him. But along the way, every time he's been able to get education and get access to people who are highly skilled in educating people with profound injuries, his life has improved immeasurably. And so the programs that you offer, I'm sure that all of us who have had experience with folks in those conditions understand that the education that you offer will make their lives much, much, much better. And I thank you on behalf of my family and the community because I hope my grandson attends NIC someday and has the benefit of your program.
Hope he does too. Thank you.
Ms. Meyer?
One more. Certainly thank you to all of you who work so hard. Makes these board meetings worthwhile when we go through this. Tim, was your mom Peggy?
Peggy, yes, that was my mother.
And I wanted to speak, I knew her and I can see the inspiration that she's provided you. She was an inspiration to me as I worked with her here in the community, so multi-generations. Hooray. Thank you.
Thank you so much for acknowledging her.
Oh, indeed.
Well, Tim, you can see we're all very pleased to hear the wonderful programs that are offered here at NIC and we couldn't be prouder of you or your staff. It was a very passionate presentation. Your personal story was really, really interesting and pleasing to listen to. And I appreciate that you introduced Dexter to us and that he came to our meeting. Thank you so much for being here. You're right. It is our responsibility as citizens and human beings to reach back for those who need us to. And so that we're doing that at NIC is very powerful. Thank you to all of you that make up the staff and the Disability Support Services and we appreciate what you're doing for our students.
Thank you very much.
Board, before we move on, I need to go back in the agenda just a little bit. I have been remiss in introducing a guest that is here tonight. A former trustee member, and I can't ever have some trustee walk in without being acknowledged because we all know what kind of commitment and effort and time goes into being a trustee. So, Mr. Armin, thank you so much for joining us tonight. For those of you who aren't aware, Mick now serves on the Dormitory Housing Commission and he's on the Board of Directors for Lake City Development Corporation, which has a strong partnership relationship with North Idaho College. So thank you for attending our meeting. Appreciate it. All right, that takes us on to our constituent reports. And first up is ASNIC, Richard Fortman.
Thank you. Madam Chair, President Dunlap, Board of Trustees, guests. It was awesome. That was a great presentation, Tim. Wonderful job. It's kind of hard to follow an act. ASNIC is in the working mode. We've been working hard to complete our goals for the year, realizing that time is short and it's something that we can't get back. So, we're trying to grasp this concept. So, we have hired two new senators, Alec Nunez and Garrett Welsh. I hope I pronounced their names right. We are happy to have them on board and I know they will be essential to helping us complete our goals. Some of these goals are a revitalized constitution, our ASNIC election that's coming up, and ASNIC banquet, org sync, and finally getting a rec center approved. So, that was a little hint. I'm happy also to report that the ASNIC budget is completed. I have to give much thanks to Steve McGory. Without him, I couldn't have done it. So, he pulls wonders. He's one of the guys behind the scenes that gets things done. So, in addition to that, lastly, we will have a hypnotist performing on March 11th at 7:00 PM in the lower level of the sub. If you want to attend that, it's open. So I think it'll be really interesting. I've never participated in one, but hey, who knows, right? Sees the day. That's the end of my report. I wish there was more, but there's not.
Richard, you're going to have to come back Dex Month and tell us about this hypnotist and how it all worked out.
I think it'll be interesting.
Board, any questions for Richard? Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
That takes us to Staff Assembly. Carol Jones?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Trustees, and guests. Staff Assembly held its regular meeting on February 12th and our guest speaker this month was our School Resource Officer, Gus Wessel. And Gus took time out of his busy schedule to just give us a brief overview of his duties on campus. He was very welcoming to us and offered that if we ever had any questions or concerns, please just stop by his office. And then that was followed by a brief discussion and question and answers about our recent drill for emergency response. Also, Pam Noah visited us to give us some information on the Foundation's February Employee Giving Campaign. And we are following an annual tradition that Staff Assembly and Faculty Assembly have a friendly competition to see who can have the highest rate of participation. And of course, while winning would be nice, our true goal... And of course, while winning would be nice, our true goal is just to increase our employees' participation in the Foundation's campaign. Mindy Patterson visited to give us an overview of the new campus virtual tour on the web, and that was basically our meeting. That concludes my reports, my report. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Carol. Any questions for Carol? Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
That takes us to Faculty Assembly.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Trustees, President Dunlap, members of President's Cabinet, and guests. Faculty Assembly met on Thursday, February 12th, and at this meeting, Vice President of Instruction Lita Burns presented the proposed faculty compensation policy and changes to the teaching focus policy to us. Dr. Burns was kind enough to stay for the entire meeting, fielding our questions and listening to our feedback, and the result was, I think, a healthy conversation about issues related to faculty compensation and the many important roles and duties faculty members take on as they work to fulfill the mission of North Idaho College. So, we really appreciate Lita taking the time to bring these policies to Faculty Assembly and being open to our feedback and our questions before these head over to the College Senate. And as Carol mentioned, right now, the NIC Foundation Employee Giving Campaign is underway. Right now, or at least the last update I got from Pam Noah, was that staff had edged ahead by one percentage point of faculty in our friendly competition, which comes to a close Friday, right? So, there's still time, and so, I'm going to be lovingly nagging my faculty colleagues to log on and support the great work that the Foundation does for the students of this college. So, that concludes my report. Any questions?
Thank you, Erin. Any questions, Board, of Erin? Comments? Thank you for your report. That takes us to the Senate. Chantel Black.
Chairwoman Wood, Board of Trustees, President Dunlap. So, our February meeting is actually tomorrow, and at that meeting, we plan on entertaining two sets of policies and procedure for second reading. One is the fundraising and development policy and procedure, and the other one is the grants coordination policy and procedure. And then, for first reading, we'll be reviewing the drug-free workplace procedure, the conflict of interest procedure, the worker's compensation policy and procedure, and then the instructor-initiated withdraw procedure. Are there any questions for me?
Board, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for your report. All right, that takes us to the President's Report. President Joe Dunlap.
Madam Chair, Trustees, and colleagues, I will try to be brief as well tonight. Dr. Lita Burns, our VP for Learning, is not here tonight. She is at the State Board of Education meeting down in Boise, and a couple of us will be leaving on the flight at Odark 30 to join her tomorrow morning. But for tonight, on the agenda, Karen Rupel will represent Lita for the TAB 5 policy presentation. We've begun our budget meetings. As Richard mentioned, he's already gotten his done. He's ahead of the pack there. And Chris and I have met with facilities this week, and over the next three weeks, we will meet with every single budget manager on campus and go through a detailed budget review with each one of them prior to bringing a proposed budget to the Board. A couple of projects I want to highlight in terms of our relationship with the community. Out at the Workforce Training Center this week, today, tomorrow, and Friday, is Safety Fest, and that's an annual event that NIC puts on that provides safety training for business and industry, governmental agencies, and anyone else who may need a refresher or training in safety. And the types of classes that are offered include MSHA refresher, CPR, and first aid courses, fall protection, manufacturing safety, OSHA 10, code updates, hazardous communications, warehouse safety, lead training, project management, HazWhopper, work zone flagging, water safety, respiratory protection, workplace violence, OSHA record-keeping. There'll be a demonstration with the K-9 police demonstration, accident investigation, and many more. And Marie Price has done a great job in organizing that event for our community members. In addition, I'd like to highlight an event, or not an event, but some of the work that's being done in our library. And that is, and I passed one of these out to each of you, it's called the Walden History Project, and this is funded by the AK and Ellen Walden Memorial Endowment, and the library staff has also worked with our foundation. And they are in the process of digitizing all NIC yearbooks, all NIC student newspapers, and that dates back to 1933, all NIC photo collections, and they are working with the North Idaho Museum to digitize all Coeur d'Alene Press newspapers that are currently on microfilm. And all of those documents will be put on a website, will be searchable, and will be available to anyone who has an interest in the history or wants to do research with regard to the North Idaho College. In addition, the library is beginning to put on a speaker series, and the first speaker will be Dr. Robert West, who was the coroner for Cootney County for four decades, and he's written a book. It's called It Can Happen and Does Happen Here, and it's about his four-decade journey in rural Idaho as a coroner. And there will be an open house in the library on February 26th as well. Couple announcements. The JFAC budget-setting dates for community colleges, that's on Monday, March 9th, and the budget-setting date for the permanent building fund is on March 12th. So, we should be watching those dates to determine where we will land in that budgeting process. HR, our HR office has moved to a new location on campus. They are no longer in the Sherman Building. They have moved to the building that used to be our security building, which is behind the facility's Headwater Building. Chris Martin and his crew was able to renovate that building. It gives the HR office individual offices where confidentiality is important in dealing with students, employees, and applicants. And the move has gone very well. The facilities look great, and so, if you're looking for human resources, they are located across campus. And that building is, just in terms of a frame of reference, is across the street from the Fort Ground Grill. And then, lastly, I want to mention that we are going through a financial aid audit, and this audit has been planned for a month and a half. And the fact is, we have not had a formal financial aid audit in over 20 years, and so, we were overdue. And so, Stephanie House, as the Acting Financial Aid Director, has stepped up to the plate with her staff and has done a fabulous job in preparing the college for that audit. And as soon as we know the results, we'll report out to you on that. And that concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Dunlap. Board, any questions for President Dunlap? Thank you. That takes us to our K-Tech Board Report. We asked Trustee Banducci to sit in on that meeting, this last go-around. Trustee Meyer was not there, I believe. Trustee Nielsen, were you in attendance? No? Okay, so, Trustee Banducci will tell us everything he learned. Please.
Yes, ma'am. Well, it was an interesting meeting. I'll share just a couple of observations, I guess. It was refreshing to see the three school districts working, that they work so well together. I mean, not that they haven't in the past, but just to see it in person and watching how they interact. And it was interesting to see also, is there was basically two representatives that come to that from each school district. You know, the superintendent, and then they have an individual that comes with him because they divided up the duties between the three districts. So, they'll have one person that may be in charge of the maintenance, and so, that's the guy that's there representing that district and the other aspects of running that facility. So, it really is a cooperative effort, and I know Ron's more intimate with this and could speak better to it. But I just, I'd love to see the model and how they're doing it. And one thing that was interesting is they mentioned that they had all three already even contributed their funds. So, they're fully funded up right now. They've got all their money. Each of the districts has paid up their dues, if you will, and so, they're right on top of this thing, and it's really, really great to see. I asked them if there's anything I should bring back here to the college, and they did have a couple of inputs. One is they're extremely excited about our new building, and so, they're very supportive of that. Another, and this is kind of follow-up to a conversation that I had, and I think the Board is aware of this also, because I've shared it with them and have known it anyway, but they're very excited about the relationship between Tim Fortune and Doug Anderson. And I'm looking right at you, partner, because I know you're excited. And Tim was very excited, and I talked to him a couple of times, about you guys going out there as a one-two punch, as a duo promoting K-Tech and NIC jointly, and that you guys are personally friends, as I understand it. And so, it just sounds like the synergy's just outstanding, that you guys are just really doing a great job. And so, they're very excited about that relationship. Really makes them feel like we're doing this with you guys. And they did do a shout-out to Cassie Silvas also. Really appreciate Cassie's involvement and her participation and her energy that she's brought to it and the things that she's doing as part of this. Couple of sidebars, I guess. Well, first, I should tell you, this meeting was on the 28th of January. Sorry, I was remiss to mention that. 20th of January, and the next scheduled meeting will actually be on the 25th of this month. So, it's a once monthly meeting. Couple other things that were out there that I thought were interesting. One in particular that I think is noteworthy to us, because being out there at a, quote, "remote" campus is a concern in transportation and the rest of that. And one of the things that's being worked on, and again, Ron may be able to speak more to this, is the extending CityLink out that way. And so, there's some things going on with the hope that maybe CityLink might get extended out there, and I think that'd be a tremendous thing to occur and for folks for transportation to have that as part of it. And then, I guess they're becoming a little bit even more of a big city, talking about maybe even a traffic light there at 41 in Lancaster. So, a little bit of an impact out there. And I guess the other thing would be is that a lot of support from the city of Rathrum. So, I think there's a shout-out from everybody there. Those folks have been very supportive of both K-Tech and, of course, Heart Venture, and as we've come back to them and asked for some help in various things, they've been very supportive.
Great. Thank you.
Overall, just a big positive.
That's great. We appreciate that you were able to attend. Trustee Meyer, I believe that there was a conflict for this month on February 25th.
Yep, I'm sorry, I'm out of town.
We were going to hope that Trustee Banducci could again cover that meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your report. Yes, Mr. Meyer. No, I know who you are. Mr. Howard.
I know who I am.
Okay.
We had a couple of handouts on the executive summary report. Are they going to come under this discussion now, or are we going to handle it later?
They're later on the agenda item.
That's good.
Yeah, information items.
Were there any questions from anybody?
Not about this, no.
Thank you, Mr. Banducci. All right, on the next agenda item, I just need to clarify, under Old Business, it says TAB 1 first reading, but this is actually for information only. This is not our first reading tonight. This is just an information item, and it is the Student Recreation Center. This will be presented by Graydon Stanley, John Totten, and Richard Fortman.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the Board, President Dunlap, colleagues and other guests here tonight. We'll be presenting in order of height, and so, I have the first opportunity. Then we'll go to John, and Richard, you know where you'll be in that.
Perfect.
It's appropriate that this topic go under Old Business, as most of you know, because this business of a rec center has been on your agenda and a part of discussion here on this campus and in this community for a long time. We're especially excited to be bringing you an update tonight. Want to give you just the latest in the happenings, and John and the committee will share more with you to that end. But recently, we met, per your instructions and part of the discussion we've had in this past year with Dormitory Housing Commission, and talked to them about the project and the cost and the particulars that you'll see tonight. We received an endorsement and approval to move ahead, and thus, we're in front of you here tonight. And as an information item, wanted you to have all of this information with the idea that we'll provide it to you tonight. Questions, concerns that you have, we'd love to be able to address that over the next month, have it back on the Board agenda as an action item during the month of March. So, I want to recognize all the folks, and you'll have a chance to see them during the PowerPoint presentation, those names, or meet them in person. But they've done an outstanding job. The Chair of the Committee that has been doing this work is John Totten. What you'll probably note more than anything else is John Totten's in a jacket tonight, and that's truly a rare occasion. I brought him a slide and tried to convince, or excuse me, a tie and tried to convince him to wear that, but you only go so far with John. I'm proud of him in the jacket. Other folks that have been involved will be introduced to you tonight, and what I'm most proud of is the cross-section of the constituents who have been a part of that. I think you'll be hard-pressed to find anybody who wasn't included in the discussion, all the stakeholders in this process. One of the things I'd like to note to you, we certainly wanted to be one of the first to break all this information to you, and the newspaper happened to beat us to that punch. As you know, they have an opportunity to review the Board agenda in advance and see what's of interest, and certainly, they saw the rec center discussion and came out and talked to some of our folks. So, as much as we wanted to be the first provider of that news to you, you might have had a chance to read that in the newspaper today, but you'll get much more detail tonight. As our Board Chair mentioned, we're not looking for action tonight, simply to provide you with information and then come back with a more formal request at the next board meeting. It is my honor to introduce a committee that's done such a great job in putting this together, starting with the Committee Chair, John Totten.
Jacket was a gift, for the record.
It's all right. Not everybody looks good in one of Stanley's ties.
Madam Chair, Trustees, President Dunlap, and all of you lovely people, I just want to say thank you to start with. I'm really, I'm honored to be up here doing this again and representing our students. I started at North Idaho College in the spring of 2003, and this was the topic of conversation at that time, and it hasn't left the table since. And I'm motivated to continue to do this on behalf of the students, and so, I just want to make that super clear, and that I'm happy to be here and I'm happy to be representing them. And this is truly, this is a student-driven project. This isn't any one of our members of the committees pet project or anything like there. This is coming from the students and has been for over a decade. I'd like to recognize the committee, and if you're here and are on the committee, please stand up for us, just so that you can recognize and put some of the faces with the names. But we've had representatives from all across campus, including our business office with Sarah Garcia, Steve McGory from Auxiliary Services, Heather from Student Development, Jess Bennett, Paul Manzardo from PE, and we had other PE faculty involved and students, and Tim, who you met earlier, from Disability Support Services, has been a great resource for us, Ken Thompson from Athletics, Laura from HR, and you can see the rest of the list there. I also want to recognize that we did work with two different private consultants as well, and so, we brought in some professional help, one by the name of Dave Teeter, who I know that you all have worked with in the past, and he was a huge help, and also, Dave Houtree from ALC Architects, and you'll see some of his drawings and renderings of the facility, and those folks were a great resource for us. As we're, I'm a Raph guide. These guys did so much work, and I just want to really recognize all their help and how diverse our group was. So, I just want to give you a brief overview of what we're going to talk about this evening. I'm going to give you a little bit of background, and then we'll have Richard speak from the students' perspective. I'll go over the project summary and timeline, and then we'll get into the philosophy and programming of the facility. We'll talk about the facility location and pre-design. We'll get into the financial impact, and then we'll close and hopefully have some question and answer period at the end. And with that, I'll hand it over to Richard.
Great, and I thought we were going in age, oldest to youngest, but... Taking a look at the first bullet, current facilities, there are three main issues that come up with that bullet. The first is accessibility. As Tim was saying earlier, we've come a long way with accessibility, but we still have some ways to go. Currently, many of these areas designated for recreational-related opportunities are not accessible to students with disabilities. I have a letter from Tim Guritz, the Director of Student Disability Support Services, that documents these issues. The second issue is student accessibility. All indoor areas that can be used for recreation are being utilized to about 90% capacity by the college-related programs. This leaves a 10% usability window for non-programming uses for students, staff, and faculty. This translates to a one-hour-a-day or a five-hour-a-week window for students in Winton Hall and Christensen Gym. I have a letter from Paul Manzardo, Division Chair of Physical Education and Resort Recreation Management, addressing these issues and other issues in greater detail. The last issue is the age and size of the current facilities. The age and design of both facilities do not make them well-suited for expansion and due to the size, only leave room for the majority of usage by college program. The next two bullets, if you take a look at those, student input and student support for Student Recreation Center. The history of this project, it goes back always, as John was saying, and to tell you the truth, we will continue to have the conversation until we get one. So the support has, for the Student Recreation Center, floats around a 70% mark every time that the students are surveyed. The last survey was taken, that was taken, had a 20% participation, or a 20% participation rate and proportionally represented the full demographic of the student population in the two-part survey. 78% of students said there was a need for a recreation center and when asked if they would support a $100 fee, 68% of the students said yes. So that being said, I'm 100% confident that the group, as they present, will show you that the need and want is there and everything adds up, 100%. So with that being said, the next person, I believe, is back with John. Thank you.
Okay, I just want to give you just a rundown on the process. The committee started in August of this past year and started meeting and we decided to split the committee into three focus areas. The first was the philosophy and programming of the facility and that's really comes down to the what and the why. What's going to happen in this facility and why are we doing it? And then we, the second group is the facility location and pre-design. And that group spent a lot of time, we toured a lot of different facilities and really dug into where is the most appropriate place on campus to put this facility? And then lastly, but certainly not least, is our, was the Financial Impact Committee that has gone on twofold, the bond itself, that would go to support the facility itself and then also the operating budget. Again, we've been working through the, through January and continue, we met today again and will continue to meet. And we met last Monday with the Dormitory Housing Commission, as Graydon mentioned, and had an excellent conversation with that group. I couldn't, I can't recognize them enough for their support and they were very engaged in the process and encouraged us to come and see you all today. And that was a big step for us and now we're here. And so that's the, that's the process so far. And I just want to mention, if you all have any questions in the middle, don't hesitate. Please, please do that. At that point, I'll hand it off to Jess Bennett, who is the coordinator of our recreational sports programs and our challenge course.
Good evening. Those of us on this committee are aware of the many benefits that a rec center would bring to our campus. We're passionate about recreation and wellness and we love sharing that passion with our students. Recreation facilities, though, can offer more to a campus than just a space to workout. Last year, the National Intermural Recreational Sports Association and the Association for Student Affairs Administrators in Higher Education worked together to conduct a nationwide survey of over 33,000 students from 41 different schools. This study produced a lot of really great information, but two numbers really stood out to us. 68% of the students who were surveyed reported that campus recreation facilities influenced their decision of which college or university to attend. Also, 74% of students reported that campus recreation facilities influenced their decision to continue attending their college or university. A Student Recreation Center at N-I-C can offer our marketing department a really great tool to recruit new students and also retain the students who are here right now. With this information, our Philosophy and Programming Subcommittee proceeded to examine the programming potential for a recreation facility on campus. We developed a mission and created priority usage. The mission of the Student Recreation Center is to provide opportunities which foster community engagement and instill a sense of belonging through physical activity. We envision a dynamic program that engages every participant and promotes physical fitness and overall wellness. We provide a positive environment for students to develop both personally and professionally by offering many opportunities for involvement. The priority usage that we determined was first priority, the student recreation and wellness. This would be intramural sports, group fitness, weight training, open recreation, et cetera. The second priority would be the N-I-C community recreation and wellness. So all of those activities that I just said, but for the N-I-C community. The third priority would be the required PE curriculum that would be offered in the facility. And the fourth priority would be community group reservations and rentals, including summer camps and rock climbing wall reservations and whatnot. Although this facility will not be used for intercollegiate athletic competitions, our new rec center will definitely help attract new athletes to N-I-C. This will take us, this new rec center will take us from being one of the only schools in our region without an adequate facility to a college with one of the best recreation facilities in the area. With this set, we went on to determine the size of the facility based on our current enrollment and the potential growth and scalability with an estimated growth of 20% over the next 10 years. We consulted with colleagues who had been through this process and we gleaned insight from their experiences. We requested information from them, including their programming documents, their line drawings with square footage, and their general programming outlines. We considered the spacing, adjacency, usage, and surfaces within the facility and we created space tables that reflect the needs that we had established. So we started with the main functional spaces, including the gym and the weight rooms, the climbing wall, fitness spaces and whatnot. Elevated track. They're not to scale here. And the support spaces, the administrative spaces, the reception area, offices, et cetera. A Student Recreation Center will provide the space we need to expand our programming and offer comprehensive recreation and wellness opportunities to our students. Some of the programming that we anticipate would be open recreation, weight training, intramural sports, group fitness classes, wellness education, PE classes, summer camps, and student leadership development and employment. With that, the next step of our process was the facility location and pre-design. I'm going to hand it off.
Heather. Hello, everyone. So, let's see. We, our committee started off by conducting facility tours of CSI, Boise State University, University of Idaho, and then all of our Spokane partners, SSCC, that's not right, SCC, SFCC, Eastern Washington University, and Whitworth University, and the newest facility in the area, Gonzaga University. We talked about building design, program and philosophy, and financial considerations of these buildings. We then looked at the pre-design of the building. We know from Justice Committee's work that the building, square footage and what's going to go in the building. The size was largely determined by the gym space that's necessary, so that's our largest footprint. And then the rest of the spaces can kind of be designed around the gym. We wanted it to make sure, we want to make sure that the building fits the feel of our campus, that this is a building that we want to be proud of. It can be the centerpiece for a lot of campuses, as we saw. And we also want it to be a long-lasting building so that this is something that the students have been working for, for a long time, but can also be utilized for a long time. The location selection process was the bulk of our work. We wanted to make sure, we learned from our partners and from research that a convenient location is important, that it's close to the student union building and residence life, again, high visibility, and then also that it fits into the N-I-C master plan, the future expansion of our campus, the future expansion of our community, and that the actual site itself was suitable for a building of this size. With that being said, almost all of the, all of our campus fits those criteria. And so we looked at over 11 locations and I'll give you just a second to kind of let that image settle into, settle in for you. We developed a pros and cons list for all of the locations that you see here. We talked about everything from how the campus will flow to what the building would actually look like in the locations that you see here. Overall, we determined that the site that's highlighted there in red will be the best location for this facility. We went back to our constituents, the students, president's cabinet, and the rest of our committee and got their endorsement for the location, which is, let's see, that gives you a little better view. It's right behind Winton Hall on River Avenue. Provides, centrally located on campus, it creates the least amount of hazards as far as when construction is actually happening and it's the right size for the building that we need.
Excuse me, is this the location for the, presently occupied by the tennis courts?
It is, yes.
Excuse me, and Heather, so I assume the parking for the facility is?
That parking lot, right.
Yeah, the current parking lot behind the Molstead Library would also serve that Once we kind of settled into this location, we conducted with our N-I-C facilities crew, we conducted a geotech survey of the site to make sure that there weren't any surprises. It turned up that everything was, there were no hazards on the site and then we also made sure that in our construction costs, we had adequate site prep costs through that, through the results of that geotech survey. All right, any questions? Different view. Next up, the financial information.
Ask another question. This came up as I attended the dorm housing meeting, the presentation that you made, but were there some kind of deed restrictions or some kind of donation restriction or something that attended the tennis courts and would you let us know what that is and how that mixed into your decision here?
Yeah, we initially were considered, or we needed to look to see what the stipulations were for the tennis courts and Chris Martin and his staff were able to find the original agreement for when we built the tennis courts and it needs to, the site needs to be used for recreational purposes, which I think this building definitely qualifies for that. Chris, or did you want to say anything else?
Trustee Howard, we also had a similar situation when the dormitory was built and we were able to refund the grant dollars that were applied towards those tennis courts and it's a similar situation in this case.
Would you need to refund anything if it's recreation by way of a Student Recreation Center?
We're working with council on determining exactly what that would entail.
Okay.
All right, so I'd like to introduce Steve McGordy and he's going to go over the financial information.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board of Trustees, President Dunlap and friends. It's an honor to be here tonight to share the financial information with you. I think the group has done a great job presenting so far, so what's left? How much does it cost and what are the funding sources? The first slide shows our project cost. If we just scroll down all the way to the bottom line, you'll see a total project cost of $7.66 million. Now floating up again, we'll see that our total building square footage is just under 29,000 square feet at a construction cost of $5.267 million. Adding in our site development allowance of $702,000, total construction cost $5.9 million. Our soft costs are estimated at $1.37 million. Total project cost without FFNE, furniture, fixtures, and equipment, total $7.34 million. Adding in our FFNE allowance at $325,000, we'll see the total project cost at the $7.66 The next slide summarizes our bond information. The bond will be financed through a revenue bond, showing here a 30-year term from the year 2016 through 2046. The total debt service on this project is $14.5 million, of which nearly $7.3 million is interest. The maximum annual debt service is $521,000. An average annual debt service, and you'll note the years 7 through 30 are estimated at $519,000. The reason we're using years 7 through 30 is that years 1 through 6 are interest-only at $345,000 annually. And the average coupon you'll see at the 4.88%. These are pretty conservative numbers. There was some padding there from a percentage basis. This rate was developed on January 20th and we have what we think is about 3/4 of a percent This slide summarizes our annual debt service through our dorm housing commission. Walking you through this, the Series 2008 is our bond debt service annually for our student union building. These are, these funds are generated from our Student Services Fund. That's a $93 per full-time equivalency student per semester revenue source. And that Series 2008, series expires in the year 2000, fiscal year 2017. Series 2012 is the bond on our residence hall. Those are funds generated directly from the income from our residence hall. You'll see that that bond expires in 2022. There's an acceleration in fiscal year 2018 from around the $400,000 number to almost double at the $800,000 plus. This was due because of the refinancing that we undertook. The Series 2012 was originally scheduled to mature in 2030, so the college derived some savings through that refinancing mechanism. Series 2016 is what we'll call the Recreation Center Bond. You'll see as noted previously that the $345,000 is the interest-only payment, years 1 through 6, until year 2023, when that $520,000 will stand alone as our dorm housing commission The supporting fund balance is important to note at this time, as these fund balances are providing collateral support. The Auxiliary Enterprise Fund, and these are fund balances at the end of fiscal year 2014, the Auxiliary Enterprise Fund is comprised of the balances from our bookstore operations, dining services, residence hall, and student union operations. The Student Services Fund balance at $2.1 million is again the $93 per full-time equivalency student generated for this building.
Excuse me, when you talk about this building, it's helpful for us, some of us have been on the board long enough to know how this was financed. Judy, anyway, you have. But it would be helpful for us and certainly for our citizens that are watching to understand that the building that we're sitting in was actually financed in this mechanism. Is that correct?
That's correct. The Administer Student Union Building was financed through a revenue bond through income generated from student fees.
And then, of course, some of the dormitory housing?
And then the Series 2012, our residence hall bond is generated through the bond, the payment for the bond is generated through income from the residents who live there and the monies that are generated.
What was the process? Maybe, maybe Dr. Dunlap or Graydon? Maybe, maybe Dr. Dunlap or Grayden, what was the process when those projects came forward? Was it similar to what we're doing tonight? When, when we, the board of trustees, I assume, would approve the, the student center moving forward to the, to the commission? Is that correct?
Madam Chair, members of the board, I wasn't here at the time that that took place, but I'd been involved in that process previously, and that's really common, how that occurs, is that relationship between dormitory housing commission as the financier, the board of trustees is the one approving the project, the location, and the levying of a fee to meet the obligation. So this process follows what I've seen occur at other community colleges where I may have been previously employed in another lifetime.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, Mr. Banducci, go ahead.
I've noticed that the way you guys did this is very nicely done in the sense of how the Series 2008 comes full cycle and coincides the next year, 2018, where there's no longer that obligation and yet, and then we've got the increase in the Series 2012 due to the refinancing. Looks like that was well thought out to basically be equivalent, so you weren't adding any additional debt at that time between those two notes. But one of the questions I have, and this is just my lack of experience with this, you mentioned the funding source for Series 2008 being student fees, and the funding source for Series 2012 being the dorms themselves. Now I'm going to speculate that the dorms may be paying for the $408,000, but I'm wondering if they're paying for the $818,000 over co-mingling funds, or is there any difference in color of money in, in the different pots that we take it out of?
That's a good question.
Because then we got the next one with another fee.
Right. The, the, the bonds are all cross-pledged, so when we, when we think about it, we think of one total financing package. The, the dormitory does not generate enough income to pay an $800,000 annual debt. At that time, then, the college will be looking at the fee for this building and how we might be, might be able to provide relief to that $800,000 Series 2012 note.
And we're-
Anything else? Go ahead.
And we're projecting, based on obviously current projections and what we're doing now in 2014, 2015, that we can meet these numbers and, and no deficit or shortfall. We're comfortable with the, I think you said $93 per student to meet this new obligation. And then, am I understanding that this 2.5 million and 2.1 million are, are just reserves right now, when you talk to them as fund balances, unobligated?
The auxiliary services fund is an unrestricted fund. However, the student services fund is restricted for operations in the student union building. All of our, all of our student buildings, and that includes administer student union building and our dormitory as well.
Are we, one more question. Have we been adding to these fund balances, or have we been having to eat at them a little bit?
The auxiliary services fund balance has been escalating through my seven years here. That was buoyed, of course, by our peak enrollment years.
Which is going to lead to my last question in a moment.
The, the, the Series 2008 or the student services fund balance, that we generate a five-year plan to the dormitory housing commission each year, and there is a spend, a spending plan for those dollars at this time serving as collateral, but those funds will be used through, through these upcoming years. There's a certain reserve that, that of course the college likes to hold in, in, in those fund balances, so we'll be, we'll be working towards that end.
All right. Because I'm, I'm suspecting there's some reserve padding, extra built into there, because you had talked about a moment ago, and I don't remember the exact term you used, but I'm going to say you said conservative numbers, reasonable numbers. How does that fare with the current enrollment projections where we've kind of seen us here the last couple of years, and we're still kind of projecting out? And I believe recently I was talking to Grayden, because I looked at the spring 2014, I looked at the fall 2014. We've not yet been presented the spring 2015 numbers. I know they're coming. What sort of factor are we putting in there to, to, to count for here?
Thank you, Trustee Banducci. So we'll, we'll speak a little bit further about that in, in upcoming slides.
Okay.
But next year, fiscal year 2016, based on what the college is using for their budget exercise currently for next year, we'll be forecasting a 10% FTE decrease. As we then forecast out the, the remaining four years of the five-year plan, my estimation would be that that's relatively flat.
Going to show that as leveling out then?
Yes.
And the numbers will line up then?
Correct.
On that scenario?
Right. And so that's our budget that we have to work with, with the reserve, with the reserve estimate as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Howard?
You may have answered this, but if so, I've missed it, and I'm going to ask it again. Is there anything in the Series 2008, 2000, well, 2008 or 2012 that require that the revenues for the retiring the 2008 bonds be shifted to the 2012 bonds once the 2008 is paid off? Anything requiring that to happen? Or is that just an accommodation to try and pay it off faster?
I'm not aware that there's a, a requirement, but the revenue is pledged from all of those sources, the student services fund for the administer student union building, and the revenues from the dormitory, and also all of auxiliary services.
Trustee Meyer?
Just thinking about our sources of revenue here, for a while, the dormitory also was slow to fill up. My understanding is it's been full for the last couple of years. And maybe the question is, as we have shrinkage in enrollment, will that affect the dormitory revenue?
It, it could, Trustee Meyer. We've been fortunate over these last few years of enrollment downturn that it hasn't impacted the dormitory occupancy as much as the rest of the college, specific to enrollment. So fall has always been a, a high occupancy semester for us, nearly 100%, certainly in the 90 to 100% range currently. And, and spring historically, we see, we see a drop-off, so we're currently at 170 bed count out of 198. Those numbers are more than enough to gener, to fulfill our, our bond obligation at the, at the 400-plus thousand dollar number, but not at the $800,000 number.
So that, if I understand this right, that's when we use the revenue for this bond to make up the difference?
That is correct.
The bond for the sub?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Nielsen, you had a question?
I've got a couple of questions. First of all is, we've talked about the surveys that we've took of the students regarding the need, and we know that, my son went to Gonzaga, so I know that their sports center is, is incredible and a big recruiting tool and retention tool. I understand all that. But one of the things is that we've had to do over the last couple, I think two of the last three years, we've had premium increases or increases for tuition. So the first question was, have we done a survey to see if that additional $93 per month is going to discourage some students from coming here if they weigh into this, but they look at that as, as additional cost? So I'd like to see if that has been done. Do you know?
Whether we've extended out to external groups, prospective students?
Yeah. Trustee Nielsen, the, the response to that has been, we've surveyed, we focused on students that are currently attending North Idaho College. And so when they were asked, would this, would this fee deter them or not, they voted in favor. And so, but we haven't surveyed outside of campus, but we've surveyed our students in support.
Perfect. Okay. Second question. Do you have the approval from the dormitory housing commission right now to, to go ahead with this? I mean, I, I don't know, I'm sure you have to have that, but are they supporting this 100%?
So if I answer this incorrectly, when we met with them previous Monday, they provided their endorsement to present this information to, to our board.
All right. Next question. With what's taken place with our new CTE campus, we're going to have a split campus. So there's a lot of students that will be attending, show up to go to, attend classes there, and then leave and go home. So for them, will they still be required under, under the way this is structured? Are they going to have to pay that fee even though that they will not be coming on this campus to use that facility?
There, there will be a cost. And I, I'll speak for the group that I, I think that this facility will be such that it would, it could attract them to, to return here for their, their wellness needs.
Okay. And the last question, sorry to ask so many, is the operating costs on this, is you do, use this for your own student body? There's an insurance cost, liability insurance of this, but when, what I see on here was additional income, which talks about bringing people in outside of the, of the student body to participate and maybe lease that out. Is the liability insurance been factored into this for an operating cost?
Trustee Nielsen, based on our insurance pool with ICRAMP, it's a nominal increase anytime we have any changes. Our, our premiums don't change when we add buildings or we take buildings away currently. So it's, we're covered as operations for the college, so there's not any incremental increase to insurance.
Even for the rock climbing wall liability versus, I mean, my insurance company, every time you add something that's a little bit different, they go and assess it and say, a little bit higher liability, a little higher premium.
And we don't have what I would consider traditional commercial insurance. Being new, I've asked tons of questions regarding the fact that we have a public beach on our campus. We have some unique things. Those do not impact our premiums currently.
Thank you.
Mr. Banducci?
I was going to wait and ask John this question, but I'm going to go ahead and go at it now since Ron kind of opened the door. There was a lot of discussion when the CROC was built and its impact on local businesses. And I guess I'm curious as to how you project the usage of this between on-campus and off-campus folks, and at what point do we start competing with the local health clubs and fitness centers, or even the CROC itself with a climbing wall? It starts to make me wonder what business we're in again. That was another reason we had to take such a long, hard look at the athletic center that we looked at at one point. And were we in the right business as an educational institution? And, and you know, what other services are appropriate for us to provide? And when do we start competing against private enterprise? I mean, $750,000 of revenue projections, we've taken some money. Gentlemen?
Yeah. The, first of all, we'll say that we've consulted our, our community partners. So we've spoken with the folks from Peak Fitness and the CROC Center about this and asked them straight out, said, are you worried about this? Do you think that this is something that will compete with you? And they all said no. And the, the best response we got was from, and I'm forgetting the fellow's name who owns Peak Fitness now, when we had that conversation, he was so in favor, because we're instilling, we're educating our students, instilling a lifestyle of health and wellness. And he said, those folks are going to get in good habits now, and they're going to pay me when they leave. And so he was very hap, very supportive of that. And so right from the horse's mouth, they're not concerned about it. And also, it is a standard amongst educational institutions nationwide. There are a lot of campuses with recreation facilities, and I'd be willing to bet that most of those communities also have commercial recreation clubs and things like that.
Okay, then, if I may follow on. Help me understand the, the revenue model a little better here. If students are paying $93, I'm guessing they get free membership, or they pay nominal amounts for certain services. Faculty has access, they pay some certain amount. And then how do we scale that for members from the community? Can they come get a membership? Or do they just come for onesie-twosie things, like if the girls' basketball wants to put on a clinic, and they use that facility instead of the main gym?
Yes.
Help me understand how that works.
Yeah. The, the, the actual fee is $100. 93 is from the student union. And so just to clarify that, and you'll, you'll see that in the coming slides. It's, this, this, the, the primary focus of this facility is the North Idaho College community, meaning our students first, and then our staff and faculty. And those will be the only folks that will have access to a full membership to the facility. So it's not open to a community member to come and buy a full unlimited membership. However, those folks will be welcomed in, in that one-time basis, like you mentioned, if they're, if they're youngsters attending one of our camps or something like that. But it is not open to anyone outside the North Idaho College community in its full capacity. Does that, does that make sense?
It does. Is there a tiered membership structure? By that, I mean, based on financial need or others? Are some students going to be $10, someone going to be 50, and then staff and faculty are 100 a month? Or have you guys thought through what that fee structure looks like?
Trustee Banducci, we'll, we'll, we'll address the income statement in a moment.
Okay.
And, and I'll address that, that question at that time.
So why don't we let you continue your presentation? And we'll, we've held you up on this, because we're all so curious.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, then, board, to proceed through these next two slides. The FTE calculation, again, that's our full-time equivalency. And we're showing year 2015 to, to help provide an idea of how that number is generated. And that is by total credit hours divided by 15, our divisor. You'll see with our fiscal year 2015 FT annual, fall and spring is at 7,042. And we broke that out for fall and spring semesters, and that's simply in half, at 3,521. As we look at next year, fiscal year 2016, we are forecasting a 95,069 total credit hours. And you'll see this is where the 10% decrease shows itself. Again, same calculation, then divided by the 15 credit hours. So we're using a baseline of FTE annual at 6,338. Simply then taking that number, multiplying it by 100, then our student fee-generated revenue equals the $634,000. The committee feels like, feels as if this is the most conservative revenue approach to Trustee Banducci's question regarding a equitable sliding scale. We're not showing it here because we wanted to show that without, with the most conservative forecast, that we wouldn't be using a proration of credit hours. But I think it's likely that that would occur, meaning that a student who is taking six credit hours and paying the equivalent of approximately $50 in order to use the facility for that semester, that 17-week period, will then be obligated to pay the additional $50 to make it equitable for our full-time equivalency students at 12 credits or more. This is our base year income projection, and you'll see again the student fees estimated at $634,000. The memberships then will be comprised of our NIC employees, and that could, and that would tier depending on whether there's a spouse involved or plus family as well. The rock climbing wall was mentioned earlier as a utilization fee, in addition to, in addition to the programming and rental fees. And those are the type of fees that John mentioned earlier, when either we're hosting a camp, putting on a camp, or renting space for an external, external camp group, to name a few. Down then to concessions and retail activity and a small amount of miscellaneous income. So our base year total generated income estimated at $746,000. Again, I'll stress the point for the committee that this is a very, what we feel is a very conservative approach to this calculation. And the last financial slide then is our income and expense projection for base year. Again, showing the 746,000 income, subtracting our cost of goods sold and our personnel expenses, operating expenses, and debt service. And the debt service again is the average of years seven through 30, showing then a net income of $16,000, proving that this venture is standalone. So we've had a lot of discussion about the, the series bonds, but the point that I want to make in looking at this is, this venture is a standalone operation, generating positive income, able to pay debt service and, and all other expenses. generating positive income, able to pay debt service and, and all other expenses.
I had a quick question, if I may. The, we have students that are dual-enrolled. So some of them, not at the high school level, but could be dual-enrolled with U of I or LCSC. And so their total credit hours might add up to 15. But maybe only six of those are at NIC. Would there be an opportunity for U of I students and LCSC students to enjoy the Student Rec Center?
Yes, the committee has engaged in, in those preliminary conversations. Again, it wasn't part of, of this estimate, but given that there is some precedent with computer labs that we think that we could work that population in, they are here on the higher education campus. And I'm sure there, they'd be a user group who would love to use that facility. So I can see the committee having further discussion on that and building that in as part of our income portfolio.
Okay, thank you.
In addition to the dual, the dual credit.
Mr. Nielsen.
Last question. Is there any situation through either student reduction or we underestimate our operating costs that there would be a potential liability to the taxpayers of this county?
Trustee Nielsen, based on the enrollment projections that we have, we do not foresee a situation where there would be an impact to the college general fund on this project at all. And so the operating expenses were, with, with respect to Steve, overestimated. And our revenue was underestimated to present the most conservative approach possible. There's also the opportunity to refinance these bonds in the next three years to further reduce the debt burden.
So the answer to the question was, there is no...
There is no impact to taxpayers for this project.
Okay.
Mr. Howard.
We don't have bond counsel here, I don't think, tonight, do we? But I asked that question of her at the dorm housing committee. And my understanding is that the bonds have a provision in them that require that if the funds that exist aren't enough, that we're required to raise the fee to the students. And they're, it's not tax-supported.
Mr. Nielsen.
And Ken, that, that's good to know because I, I guarantee you for the people that are watching this for the first time, all they hear is that, that the students won a rock climbing wall. I mean, that's probably about what they hear. If the normal taxpayer that is uneducated, uninformed about what this process is, understands this is fully funded by the students, it's gonna be financially supported by the students and it's gonna be for the good of the students with no risk to the taxpayer, then at that point, the taxpayer says, "Well, gosh, I, I, I don't have a, I don't have a fight in this right now." So I think it changes the whole perspective. But I'll bet you most people think this is just another implementation of a facility that's gonna be required for the taxpayers to put their hand back in their pocket again, so.
Thank you for clarifying that, Trustee Nielsen. I hope that, that point is, is, is heard now.
Mr. Banducci.
Steve, one quick question, if I may. Showing $633,000 in memberships. So about how many memberships do we think we're gonna have?
So the $633,000 is based on our student fees.
Okay.
That's the 6,338 times the $100 student fee. So we're not calling that...
Okay, but then memberships, so memberships are 63,000.
Correct.
And so I see the student, let me, let me say that differently, maybe I didn't ask it right. I see the student fees, that's a simple multiple times the $100.
Yes.
So 63,000 memberships. That's $63,000 from the memberships, so that'd be 630 memberships at $100 apiece?
Well, we can break it down this way to be a little bit more specific, so.
I'm just curious to project how many memberships you're looking at having, just, because you have a certain number of people available, pool of students, pool of faculty and staff. And I'm just trying to get an idea of the percentage of folks you think will have memberships. Do you follow my question?
They're about 200 in this scenario.
Okay. Okay. Sounds reasonable? It seems like we have quite a pool to get to.
Right, and, and so we looked at the, the different NIC employee populations, full-time, part-time, adjunct. Looked at the total population and then applied a percentage, I think a very conservative percentage. In most cases, well, in the, in the case of full-time, 20%. Part-time, 8%. 8% for, for spousal and about 4% for the family plan. So that's where we come up with that 200. I think it's a pretty conservative estimate.
No, thank you. That's what I was trying to get some insight as to what you guys were thinking, you'd get, what sort of level of participation.
Yes.
Did you have anything further?
That's the last slide. If there's nothing further, then I'll, back to John.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, just to begin to wrap things up, this is the long-term plan. So certainly, this is pending your approval and also the approval, the, the final approval of the, the DHC. But just looking ahead, so that we've thought this project through to, to finish. Our, you can see the timeline here, but our plan would be that if, if, if you all endorse this project this spring along with the, the NIC budget, we'll start the architecture and engineering selection process immediately at that time to get, to get the ball rolling. We would then have the following, starting in June and through January of next year, the facility, the facility design. And then in February, we have our review. March of 2016, so about a year from now, we would begin the bidding and contracting process. And then we'd have April through the following June to, to build the facility, finish it with our goal to be open for the fall of 2017. So just to give you kind of the big picture of what the, of what the, the plan is. And so that's kind of how it lays out right now. We know that there's a lot of contingencies in here and things that have to be approved, but just to, to show you that that's the outlook for the, for the project.
Yes, Mr. Banducci.
John, a couple of questions, if I may. As I'm looking at the charter of the facility, the picture, the schematic, and I know it's not to scale and it's just artist conception to give us an idea.
Uh huh.
Is there any seating capacity with the gymnasium?
No, no, it's not a, it's not a competition gymnasium. So the, the gymnasium will be for, I mean, there'll certainly be a lot of competition going on in there, but not at a spectator. That, that's not the intention.
So not even a limited amount of...
Definitely, there's a, there's, there's a buffer around the, obviously we don't wanna play basketball right up to the wall. So there's definitely a, a space. And we consulted our, our friends at the NERSA to find out what was adequate and safe. And we used that within our space table when we designed the, the pre-design of the facility.
Okay, so there might be like one bench if it's being used for intermarials or something for guys to have a sideline and sit, but that might be the...
That's about it, yep.
All right, I guess the, the other question I would ask then, and maybe this is a perpendicular to the discussion, I'm not sure, or maybe it's parallel. And I, I see Randy Boswell sitting back there, and it occurs to me that we're talking about $7.6 million for a, a recreation facility. And when I think of recreation, I still think of sports and recreation. And I think of our current facility that we haven't been able to do anything with, where we have an inadequate space for our trainer and his staff. Our locker rooms are pathetic, the wrestling room is, is ridiculous. Is there any way that our intercollegiate athletes are gonna benefit from this facility? Or that we're gonna have any cross-use to, you know, until the fact that we either can gut Christiansen or expand it or change the footprint or fix that building somehow? Because otherwise, we're stuck. We got a, we got a gym that's still too short. We got facilities that are still inadequate and I haven't done a thing for my inter, intercollegiate athletics. Spending a lot of dough.
The short answer is yes. Every student on this campus is gonna benefit and that includes our student athletes. And I was just really overjoyed when we had a conversation with Al Williams about this. And he was overwhelmingly in support of it because he, and he said, "Number one, it's gonna help us recruit athletes." Says, "To have a state-of-the-art place for them to work out and be fit," because we know that that's their lives, right? These folks are full-time athletes, that's what they care about most. So to be able to bring those prospects on campus and say, "This is a facility that you're gonna be able to utilize as a student here," he was very, very in support. Even though it, it is not gonna be meant for intercollegiate competition, our student athletes are certainly gonna benefit from, from these facilities.
Trustee Meyer.
Couple more questions. I'd like to go back and look at the site discussion. Because we heard a little bit about where you're suggesting it's gonna be. And you gave us a map with site considerations. I wasn't sure what the codes were for some of these other sites. I figured out numbers, they're just the numbering of the sites. And the waterfront is in SR2, am I reading that right?
Yeah, yeah, so what we, what we did there was just to help keep us organized. Those were different iterations of the similar space. And so, for example, the, the SR2, the, the space there, which, which would be just to the south of the Leekildel Hall, if that, if that clears it up at all. We reorganized that a few times. And so we oriented the building several times, so the SR2 has no significance. It, it's just a different iteration of the same general location. Does, does that help?
So the 7R was another iteration?
Yep, yep, 7 and 7R were different, different concepts that we considered connecting to the student union or being across on the soccer field. And so again, 7 and 7R were just different renditions of the same general area.
And the, and 9R location would be essentially what was...
That's the Robin Hood campground? Yep, yep, and so we looked at that as well. And, and again, one of the main considerations and what brought us to number four was, was the, the site prep itself. A, a lot of these, we, you've gotta close streets or do some serious construction and we didn't think we'd be able to afford it in the current model. And so site four on the tennis courts was, was, and, and I think philosophically, being in the dead center of campus also. Those were the two main considerations, that we weren't gonna have to close any streets or, or really incur any extra cost to the, to the college. So it was the most cost-effective and I feel to be the most efficient location for the facility.
Yes.
Thank you. Couple more thoughts then on this site you have. Parking is always an issue. And I think I heard the reference to this parking would occur where the library parking currently occurs.
Right, so you'll be able to park there and also across the street, there's a lot of parking very, very nearby this facility. We're not gonna take up any parking spots, that's for sure. We made sure we weren't gonna decrease any parking on campus.
That would be my question, isn't the parking lot usually full during the day with library usage? Or that library parking lot in the parking across the street, aren't they already in full use?
All the parking is, is definitely at a premium on campus. What we have to remember is that, that's the same number of students that will be on campus. If that, does that make sense? So with the addition of the facility, it's still the same people. So they're coming to campus to, to use all of our facilities, to go to class, to come here and utilize the recreation center. And so we're not anticipating the construction of this facility to increase the number of cars. Those folks are gonna be coming to campus and utilizing it anyway. But we do know that, I can see President Dunlap nodding his head, that parking's a challenge here. And our consideration with this site was proximity to our current parking and definitely not to, to take any parking away.
That's a pretty important consideration, because if we're gonna have folks from CTE come on to campus to use this, if we're gonna have the community come on to campus to use it in a much smaller ratio, I understand. But it's insidious how the parking never seems to be enough. We already have that issue. I wanna be sure we've thought about it as we look at...
It was probably the top, the first thing that came up was parking. Because it's, it's a, it's a topic that we discuss constantly here on campus. And this, again, was what we thought to be the most efficient use of our current parking and then definitely, again, not to impact it negatively at all.
Couple follow-ups and then, then we'll, to give you a chance. You mentioned the master plan and at least in our history on the board, there have been numerous master plans. Which one did you use to choose where to site this?
Um, I'll be honest, we, we went in, under the advisement of our, of our president's cabinet at that point. So when we settled on this location, we handed off to them and asked them to consult their master plan and they came back with a, with a positive result. So if, if there's any follow-up to that from, from any of you, but they, they, I'm not sure which plan you all used, but I know that, that we gave them the site and they considered it and came back and endorsed it.
Then my thought would be, I'd like to see that master plan because we're talking about, so are other things going on on campus. Certainly the joint use building is clearly on the agenda now and whatever is ahead. Parking being another one, eventually it may be a parking structure, which has generally been considered to be as far off campus as we can, so we use the campus to put all the buildings together. But I think it would help me look at the bigger picture as a board for when we do this, where do the ripples go? For parking, for student access, for future growth, those kind of things. So as part of our next tune-up, if we could see something more about, this is too isolated for me for the big picture of what we're, that 20-year...
I think what I can do is consult with President Dunlap and his group and we can come back with our next meeting with a, a little bigger picture explanation. Does that sound reasonable?
Could you, could you also add the consideration of the cultural center we've talked about with the tribe? Because that's another possible...
We'd probably need a list because there are priorities, that joint use was next, what timeline does that happen? What next happens after that? That's, that's a fair, that's, to me, what master planning does is, these are what we're working on now for the next two or three years. And you're right, that site, site prep impacts what else is going on in the neighborhood. It, I just, that bigger picture would be helpful to me.
Trustee Meyer, I would, I would suggest that we, there's a list, certainly. But this board has never approved a facility's master plan. And so it's going to be a bit of a challenge for them to come back with what the priorities are, since we've never approved that. But they can come back with what we've, I guess, what we've discussed. And, but there's nothing, certainly nothing set in stone.
Then maybe it's time for us to look at a master plan that is never set in stone, but at least penciled in.
Okay. Mr. Dunlap, or Dr. Dunlap?
Madam Chair, I think there's some confusion with the definition of a master plan and our approved PUD. And in the PUD, it describes building locations on campus with restrictions related to height and size and, and parking. And so normally, an institution will contract with an architectural firm to develop a master plan that goes out five to 10 years. And so at the next board meeting, we could come back with the approved PUD and look at the sites and the potential facilities that can go into those sites. One of the reasons, for example, for this building being placed in Area 4 as opposed to Area 1 is that Area 1 has the greatest height restriction. In other words, I believe you can go up to 80 feet in that area.
70 or 80.
Yeah, okay. And we didn't wanna put a shorter building in that space and use up the aerial space that could have been better used at a future date. So we can come back with the approved PUD with the anticipated building requirements into the future and look at how those might fit.
Thank you, because that would, that should have a notice where the joint use building is being thought about.
Right.
Because there's been some confusion about that, too. Good, thank you. Your turn, Ken, you made it.
I'll have to be called on first.
Trustee Howard, please.
Maybe a couple of comments. First one from somebody who doesn't fight for parking spaces down here. I think there's plenty of parking down here. People just don't wanna walk that far.
I couldn't agree more.
We do have a lot of parking.
That's health-related.
Yeah. And this is an exercise. The, the other thing I would like to ask you to talk about a little bit, it seems in my, the dim res, this is my memory when we went to, when I went to the dorm housing meeting, that you talked about, or somebody talked about having some input from other activity centers and other colleges about the philosophy of people wanting it in the center or close to the activity. Would you, if I'm not making that up, would you describe that a little bit?
Yeah, definitely. The, the national study through the NERSA and NASPA that we mentioned, and then also through our, our work with colleagues in different organizations. All the research shows and all the feedback we showed was, in regards to choosing a location, the key was proximity to the student union and the residence hall. And as you can see, this is, it's hard to get much closer right now. And so those were the two things that were mentioned. But then the general statement was, the closer it is to where the main activity center is of the campus, the more it will be utilized. And so with that information, I think that this, again, being essentially in the dead center of campus, but that's, that's the justification that we use. People were adamant and said, "Put it right in the middle and put it as close to the other, the center of campus as possible."
Trustee Banducci.
Well, first off, Ken's retired, so he might need the exercise and he has all day to walk, so take his time. Once upon a time, there was a fairly strong group of advocates for tennis in this town. And they had a club or a group. And I, I know when the McEwen tennis courts went away, there was kind of a, a, a cry about that a little bit. And I think there were some replacements. And there's always been kind of an issue there. Other than the grant issue and some of the other issues with the tennis courts, do we have any arrangements with those folks? You know, we're supposed to provide those for their tennis league or their events or is there, is it gonna be a heartache there?
Um, I, I would imagine that there will be...
Not against tennis, that's what I'm just saying.
No, and neither am I, and we're certainly not the intention. But when we, when we look at the use of that space, it is incredibly minimal. And so there, it's, it's only a handful of folks that even use it right now. And so it's only a handful of folks that even use it right now, and so whereas, I think we can provide...
So we have no agreements or anything that we're worried about?
We're not obligated in any way. Again, with the grant itself, Chris addressed that earlier, so we're on top of that, but no, other than that, no.
Trustee Meyer.
Todd, I think you kind of, is the utilization of the tennis courts because they are in good shape or because nobody wants to use them there?
I think it would be a combination of both, both things.
Because I mean, that happened to McEwen, the courts went into disrepair, and I think it was a planned obsolescence, and it was a good way to get rid of them, because they were unrepairable. So it was like, well, if we can't do anything with them, we might as well get rid of them. But I think that was kind of planned all along, to be truthful.
Yeah, that's certainly not where we're...
I don't think that was our intention here, yeah.
No, and definitely not where we came from here. We looked at this more so how I explained it to Ken, is this is the ideal location for it. The fact that it happens to be the tennis court and that we're replacing it with a multitude of other opportunities. There is a multi-activity court in the facility right now where you'll be able to play as much tennis as you want. So there's definitely going to be those opportunities. So we're not, we're not whacking tennis entirely. It's just, we're going to use this space for so much more.
No, and I wasn't accusing you of that at all, John. I just was wondering if we had any agreements with that club or group of folks that...
And we definitely considered that.
Okay, Board, we, Mr. Nielsen?
Just the last comment, John. I'd like to see, by the time we get back together next time, let's see if you can't get written approval from DHC saying that we approve this process, and then we don't have to worry about that.
Well, Mr. Nielsen, I don't think that's part of the process. I think we approve it first before they can do that. Mr. Howard, you were at that meeting, can you advise?
Well, actually, Mick's probably in a better position to say what the board is thinking. I think they talked about it afterwards, and so I'm not going to try and guess that. But the process, as I understand it from the statute, is the proposal is made to our board first. We look at the, whether or not we would approve it in concept. And then it goes to the dorm housing, and they have to prove whether they're going to actually do it and whether they'll actually approve a funding mechanism and bonding mechanism for it. And then when they approve it, it's sent back to us for execution in terms of, you know, kind of overseeing the project. They don't have the staff to do that. But actually, they're the ones that approve the project and prove the funding for it.
At what point in that process, sorry?
Mr. Banducci.
At what point in that process, my understanding is that we have to approve the student fee itself.
Correct.
So do we have to do that upfront, and that's part of our yay, verily, go forth and be fruitful and take it to the dormitory housing commission? And we've said, okay, you can assess the student fee, and we are okay that we'll give you some spot here on the campus, and we're okay that it fits into our, whatever we want to call it, master plan, PUD, whatever, and that it's jumped our four or five hurdles, and then it strictly then becomes a matter of their approval and funding mechanism and making it happen, putting it out.
Would you like to respond to that?
RFQ, RFP.
No, no, I think you're absolutely right. Our obligation is to approve the fee, not the dorm housing commission. And so hence this preliminary looksee at it and the first reading and second reading to see whether or not we're comfortable with approving the fee. If we're not, we better say so now, you know, because that's our obligation to do that. But in terms of approving the project and the way it's funded by bonding, that's the dorm housing. Our responsibility, as I recall the statute, is to approve the student fees to pay off the bond.
Trustee Meyer.
One last question. After hearing our presentation today about special services for students with disabilities, where is that in the design of this facility?
Right there.
Well, they brag about it.
Yeah, no, Jim's been a member of the committee from the beginning and will continue to do so, and so that, access for all of our students is going to be at a paramount throughout the specific design of the facility.
And access means not only access to the building, but access to the equipment and the usage of things.
Throughout. We, like you saw, we've got exemplary staff in that group, and they are part of this committee, and so those considerations will definitely be made.
Thank you.
Well, Board, we have, it's been a good informational presentation. It is just for information, so next month it would come back for first reading. We can continue to ask questions. Meanwhile, if you have specific questions, you can always reach out to Dr. Dunlap and ask him to get those answers for you. We have a lot to think about. There isn't any one of us who doesn't want to do everything we can for students on this campus, that's why we're here. I'll tell you, just personally, me, one board member, not representing the rest of the board, I was, I've been a student on this campus twice, once in the 80s, and then when I was finishing up my bachelor's degree at LCSE, and each time, I would have happily paid the student fee, and I had student loans, but I would have happily paid for the access to this kind of facility so that I could recreate with my fellow students. That's just one perspective. All the board needs to give this some strong consideration and see where they land on this, and then we will move forward from there. So, Dr. Dunlap, go ahead. Yeah, I do think that's a great idea. We do have a lot more on the agenda, so we will take a quick five-minute break. Thank you, thank you for your presentation.
I was only doing that for Ron's behalf.
Welcome back from our break. We're returning to our February 18, 2015 board meeting at NIC trustees. Next on our agenda will be our second reading of our revised campus emergency policy. We do have quite a bit of more policy to get through. In the interest of time, Board, we're just going to keep plugging along through these fairly quickly. Graydon Stanley, thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board, President Dunlap, and again, colleagues and friends. Second reading of this policy, you might recall when we brought it in front of you at the last meeting, we talked about most of it was out of date. You note that we've deleted much of that information, have it current according to our policy, according to our processes here. And the one comment that you had that you asked us to address from the board was talking about asking our constituents here to comply with the policy. You might note that we took that back to our staff, and then I took it to president's cabinet as well. And there's been one addition from the original text that you had that should be noted in your board packet. That is, at the end of paragraph one, under campus emergency policy, where it says, "College employees are expected to be familiar with and comply with all campus emergency protocols." So that was trying to address the concern that you expressed, and it had support from our faculty, staff, and students on this campus. I hope that addressed your concern.
Thank you. Board, any comments or questions or motions?
I move we approve the amended campus emergency policy 3.13.
I have a...
Excuse me, 7.04.
Thank you. I have a motion from Trustee Howard. Do I have a second?
Meyer seconds it.
Any further discussion?
I have one question, if I may.
Mr. Banducci.
Graydon, as I look at page one into page two, top of page two has a partial sentence. Help me understand where that came from. Looking at the bottom, immediately at a phone number, "Campus security supervisor will initiate any required action and complete the necessary reports," period. And then at the top of the next sentence is, "Will initiate any required action and complete the necessary reports." Is that just a duplication, it looks like to me?
I'm sorry, it is a duplication. In fact, on my copy, that doesn't show, but that would be, given what you read to me, that's just a duplication of the line previous.
Okay.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work on this policy. That takes us to our tab three, first reading of revised political activities policy 3.02.11. Mark Brownie.
Graydon. Just Graydon. Madam Chair, members of the board, pleasure to be here tonight. This, as you mentioned, is a first reading of revised policy 3.02.11, political activities. As Vice President Stanley noted, this is part of an ongoing process over the last year plus that members of the president's cabinet are undertaking in reviewing each policy that we utilize here on campus. There are two revisions, slight revisions on this policy. The first that I would draw your attention to is the insertion of the language, quote, "including electronic correspondence in accordance with NIC policy 3.08.02, section three, uses not allowed." We believe that the insertion of that language gives it a reference point to come back to with another college policy to reinforcing what is proper usage of electronic communication, which is the official form of communication here on campus, that when employees or staff personalize signatures, sometimes there can be occurrences during political campaigns of anything from a graphic of an elephant or a donkey or a "Don't Tread on Me" flag that in an email signature that can inadvertently constitute an endorsement of any kind of candidate that might be running for a public office. According to the NSC policy, there are official signatures with directions as to how and name, title, contact information, and then, of course, contact, interactive contact through our social media channels are outlined. The last revision, the other revision, is in the third paragraph, as you'll see, which we have inserted the language, "College president in consultation with the employee supervisor and supervising member of the president's cabinet." If you look at the third graph in the policy, it talks about NIC employees who are elected to the state legislature. We're talking about a very finite, I guess we have three districts and three, you know, this would be nine potential spots in Cooten County that a person could be elected to. I guess, in theory, they could be, you know, somewhere else from wherever they live. But to put into alignment the right reporting structure, because that employee that would report to a supervisor, maybe perhaps report directly to a member of the president's cabinet, the consultation for the provision that's already in the policy is that that person is granted a leave of absence from the day before the opening of the regular session to the day after the close. The only change is that it does put into the proper structure there that that person would work in consultation with their direct supervisor and the member of president's cabinet who oversees them, and then on up the chain to the president. So it codifies, if you will, that reporting structure. Outside of that, those are the only two changes that are, that have been put in the policy, and I'd be happy to answer any further questions you might have on that.
Thank you. This is for first reading. Board, questions? Todd, Mr. Banducci.
I could be Todd. Is this the appropriate time? We've been chatting about the recent letter that was signed by three members of the NIC community and the appropriateness of signing something with our official titles as either trustee or other president's cabinet, and whether we're doing stuff in a political manner or not, the appropriateness and such, and what those boundaries are. That's come up, and so is this an appropriate time? I mean...
Well, I think, Mr. Banducci, you're asking questions of the board, certainly not appropriate for Mr. Brownie to address board activity.
But does this policy include that sort of thing? I guess is where I'm trying to understand the extent of the policy and how far-reaching it is. If I sign as Todd Banducci, NIC trustee on something, then that's a tacit endorsement by the college and by the board of trustees, as I represent the trustees.
Sure, and I think that point's well taken. However, this policy is not directed toward the board of trustees. This is a board of trustees policy.
It is, but we have members of the faculty that recently signed a letter, excuse me, of the president's cabinet, including the president himself. So does this not also monitor the president and his president's cabinet? That's really where we're at on this.
Madam Chair, if I might clarify...
Speaker, right, as private citizens versus as members of the...
Sure.
This policy deals directly with staff members or faculty members who are elected to the state legislature. That is the scope of the policy.
Thank you very much. So, Mr. Trustee, or excuse me, Mr. Banducci.
Well, I'm reading the first paragraph. Well, look at the first paragraph. I challenge how that first paragraph is written, then, Mark, with that narrower definition. It says, "North Idaho recognizes that employees are both integral members of the educational institution and private citizens. When they speak or write as private citizens, they should be free from institutional censorship or discipline. However, employees should make every effort to indicate that they do not speak for North Idaho College, neither by using college stationery nor by identifying NIC in their statement or with their signature." This is beyond just being elected in a political office, Mark. This is signing a letter as one of 17 signatories to the legislature to advocate a position on behalf of an advocacy group on a political item that has nothing to do with educating kids. We are an educational institution, you guys made a political statement.
Mr. Banducci, I think you're getting off topic on this policy.
Well, did I misunderstand the first paragraph? Let's just look at it.
And I think that we can certainly underboard comments or any other thing you want to put on the agenda in the future to address what you want to talk about tonight, but under this policy, you're off topic.
But does it pertain to that? That's where I'm running to go. Is the relevancy of this policy in that first paragraph, does it pertain to such things as that example?
Again, I think you're putting Mr. Brownie in an awkward position, Mr. Howard.
Well, he can explain what the purpose of the intent of the policy.
What we're asking right now, I think, is to approve a policy. We're not, we're not having a trial on whether somebody violated the policy or not.
I'm trying to understand the extent of the policy.
But that's what you're doing. And you're using as an example what happened as what may be a violation of the policy. That might be, but right now, we're just talking about, do we want to approve this policy or not? That's all we're talking about.
So I would ask that you bring that forward under a different topic on whether you felt there was a violation of policy.
I'm not asking about a violation, I'm not asking if there was one. I'm asking, is that an example of the type of communication, as I read the first paragraph, that would fall under that jurisdiction? That's where I'm trying to understand, the extent of the policy and what it covers and what it oversees. So, I'm sorry, I don't mean to make it as indictment, I'm trying to say, anybody violate, I'm just wondering if, is that the sort of thing that we're talking about when we talk about, "Do not speak for North Idaho College, neither by using college stationery or by identifying NIC in their statement or with their signature?" Is that a type of thing that qualifies under that?
Yeah, I don't know that it needs to answer that, quite frankly, because the issue, I think, is whether or not we're going to approve this policy. I do have a question on the policy, though.
Certainly, and then, Mr. Nielsen, after you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you want to go?
I just, my first question to Mark is, do you know a pass where we've used this policy before?
Madam Chair, Mr. Nielsen, again, no. And I think we had a similar situation a few months back, where we had a unique policy that hadn't been utilized.
And we discarded it. So my next question is, similar to a sabbatical, which goes through a process, where it goes through a selection process, then it goes to front of lead it, and then for final approval, it goes to the board. I see that you consciously took the board out of that decision on a rare case like this. Why?
Madam Chair, Mr. Nielsen, to put in the proper reporting structure, if an employee asks for an extended leave of absence for whatever their reason might be, that immediate decision is worked with, in consultation with the employee, their immediate supervisor, then to the member of president's cabinet, and ultimately to the president. The reporting structure for the board in terms of direct supervision is board to the president. The president then has direct supervision over his direct reports and then on down. So it puts that structure in alignment.
And, Mr. Nielsen, I will say that any time that I see that the board is removed from policy, it certainly raises my antenna as well, but the actual, I mean, the actuality of it is that we don't supervise these people directly. Any kind of sabbatical for this sort of thing would be approved by the supervisor and the president. Go ahead.
Comment, it says, I understand that that is how this reads now, but I, that the one time that we participate in it is in a sabbatical where it says right here, "Leave and pay status of the employees who are elected to part-time will be determined by." This is in some similarities to somebody that goes on a sabbatical that is given compensation in a job being held, and there, and at that point, that there's a full presentation about what that is, and it has approval. So I'm just saying, this is, this is a little bit different, but it's still, there's a conscious effort that the board's final approval of this is taken out. That's all I'm pointing out.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Howard.
Mr. Brownie, in the third full paragraph, it seems like there are two classes that have been set forth. One are those that are elected to the state legislature, and they will be granted a leave of absence. I mean, that's mandatory.
Without pay.
Without pay. The second class of cohort that that addresses to is leave and pay for NIC employees who are elected to part-time municipal or county offices. And those are the only ones who are going to be evaluated by the college president in consultation with the employee supervisor and the supervising member of the president's cabinet. And I guess I'm guessing, but I don't know. I'm going to ask you, is that because the part-time municipal or county offices may be compensated, and so the review is to adjust compensations? Or what's the purpose of the second class of people being approved and the first one being mandatory?
Sure. Madam Chair, and Trustee Howard, and members of the board, I think on an individual basis that what would have to be considered is... basis, that what would have to be considered is, is certainly if there is compensation involved, but also time commitment is, is more the consideration. You know, what is going to be the commitment for this person to serve in that part-time municipal or county office? You know, what would be the occasion that it would take them away from their regular duties? How would the regular operation of whatever department that employee is located, and how would that affect that operation? And then, how are things changed and restructured in, in order for that to take place? So, it gives the supervisor, along with the supervising member of cabinet, a chance to review that, to make sure that the efficiencies and the needs of the college are, are certainly met. We want to encourage all of our employees, as we say, you know, in the first paragraph, to certainly be involved. We hope that they strive to be involved in their individual communities and counties. If they are going to run for an election, be elected to, as a part-time clerk of a small municipality, or maybe in a bordering county, then that is going to have an impact on, on what they do here. Certainly, you know, for this part-time job, not compensated, that you all have volunteered for, certainly takes a commitment of time and effort. And for those of you that are, that are still in day-to-day employment, you have to balance that, and you certainly have to have conversations with your employers about how you balance the needs for your elected position versus your regular day-to-day, day job, if you will.
Thank you. I would just like to note that the language in the first paragraph says that employees should make every effort to indicate they not speak for North Idaho College. That's good practice. It says "should," it certainly doesn't say "shall." I don't think there's ever a situation where we totally control free speech. But good practice is, we all make every effort not to represent the college unless the college itself, this board, has come out and endorsed something. So, Mr. Banducci's concerns are that we make every effort to not represent the college, and I think we all agree with that. This is just first reading, so we'll bring it back and have further discussion.
I have one more, one more question, if I may.
Mr. Banducci.
Um, and a comment, I'm glad Ken pointed out about the without pay for the actual legislature, because that's about a three-month commitment, and that would be close to a sabbatical like Ron was referring to, but it looks like that's already addressed. Mark, I don't, I don't know which municipal or county positions are, are part-time, there obviously must be some. And so I'm wondering if the word "part-time" is necessary, and maybe there are some, because I look even at the county commissioners, who are considered full-time, I guess, and they get paid so, but yet, I know some of them had their own businesses, or still were doing other things, so somehow they were able to manage that, and different people doing other things. Does the concept of part-time versus tacit full-time, do we, do we care about that, in that language?
Madam Chair, Trustee Banducci, I think we do, and here's why.
Okay.
A full-time position such as a Cooten County Commissioner is a full-time compensated position. Let's say, for example, Chantel runs for Cooten County Commissioner and wins in District One. She is now a full-time employee of Cooten County, and as such, would not be available to continue her work in the registrar's office at North Idaho College. She would have to make a conscious choice of who, and, and for whom she's going to have full-time employment. Part-time is a different story. If Chantel lives in Rathrum and is elected to the city council, that is, in essence, a part-time job. It is not compensated, it's a full-time position, so thus the designation in, in the policy. But yet, there will be demands on her time that may take her away from her day-to-day duties, and thus, you need that consultation with her supervisor and her supervising member of cabinet, and the president, to say, okay, we can absorb X amount of hours without it impacting the operation. If it's going to be more, then we're going to have to, to come to some sort of arrangement. And congratulations on being elected, by the way.
Thank you, and we will look forward to this next month for more discussion.
Absolutely.
Thank you. That takes us to Tab Four, our first reading, Eliminate Payroll Advance Policy 3.02.27 and Memorials Policy 6.06.01. Chris Martin.
Madam Chair, trustees, we're coming before you tonight, asking for the elimination of both policies, for payroll advances and for memorials. The college made a change a little over a year ago to go to bi-weekly pay. Previous to this, college employees were paid on a monthly basis, which created a need for a payroll advance mechanism. Since making the change to bi-weekly pay, that need has disappeared, and is not part of the common practice of the college. So we're requesting to move that to the administrative guidelines and not have a policy providing for payroll advances.
Board, on this particular policy, any questions or comments on the first reading? All right, hearing none, please proceed.
Policy 6.06.01 is a little more touchy, if you will. We're requesting to eliminate the policy regarding memorials. And the reason for that is that it's created an undue hardship on the college to maintain things such as trees that were planted in memory of someone, or rocks that have been placed on campus in memory of individuals. And we are working with the development office to create a better way to offer memorials through scholarships, or through specific gifts such as benches that have a set life term, and can be moved for future needs, and they, they also are not damaged the same way that trees and rocks around campus have been damaged in the past.
Okay. Board, any comments? Trustee Meyer.
Question? Just about the two art pieces that I know the most about, one for Pat Flammy and one for Jack Steve, both longtime friends of the college. I think you say memorials, do you say art? You did say art pieces, didn't you?
We didn't specifically address art pieces.
So, two questions. One is, things that are in place are, they stay. Anything else to be put in place needs to not be that or get approval? And I, my question was, who approves? How does that part work?
Two, two things. We would like to rely on the board for the naming rights on campus. That falls within board precedent to allow for naming of anything on campus, goes through the, the board process. So, one piece there is the naming of those things. The second piece being art or other items that have a useful life and are specific to the campus. What's happened in the past is we've had things like trees, that were named in honor or in memorial of someone, and those trees, through natural issues, have to be relocated, or they die of their own, and that's created the problem.
Or they're on the dike. But the issue still is, then...
Sorry, I don't even have a comeback for that one tonight, I apologize.
It's best you don't. The issue then, like, with trees, has some, some life to it, different than some of the metal pieces of art versus wooden pieces of art. I, I don't know, it is, it is a sticky one. And I was trying to think through, like you said, naming rights, is that then where the board comes into approval for acceptance of...
Absolutely.
Something that somebody wants to give to the college, and other, all institutions go through that.
Absolutely.
I like this one, will accept it. I don't like that one, I won't accept it. It's really sticky.
So our, our goal here is to work with the development office, because in the past, we've had these things happen outside of the development realm, and this really falls into gifts to the college, and ensuring that there's a process for how we evaluate gifts, and making sure that we have long-term plans to maintain these gifts if there's a maintenance issue that needs to be addressed.
Uh-huh, or damage.
Or damage.
Well, I, I think the Meyer Health Science Building is in very good shape, and will be here for a long time. Mr. Howard?
I think I recognize the problem that you're identifying, but I'm not sure that I can distinguish it from a lot of other problems at Meyer Rise, in terms of people who donate things, and we want them, and their name is associated with them, and is that a, is that a memorial, then? I mean, if somebody donates money for a tennis court, and they call it the tennis court with their name on it...
Or a piece of machinery.
I'm not sure what this policy is really addressing. In the past, it left it up to the board whether to do that or not, and now we're removing any policy at all as to whether or not the board can address those issues. Help me, help me understand how you're going to administer it, then.
Absolutely. This policy has been used in the past for the placement of trees and for rocks on campus. That is really where this policy has been used, and those items have created not only hardship for the college, but oftentimes, has not created the goodwill that we'd like to have with the original donors, because they've had to be removed for building projects, they've been damaged, or, quite frankly, the tree has died, and that has created difficult conversations with families, who, we're placing a living item in memory of a deceased family member. And so that's what we're specifically trying to address here. Things like art, equipment, other useful items, go through the development process now, and we want to make sure that we are very clear that all gifts to the college work through the development office, because there's a process and a policy in place for that now.
I guess my difficulty is that one person's memorial is another person's piece of art. And, right now, you're removing those decisions from the board. The board, I, I would think, should be able to say no to memorials that are stones and rocks and trees, after having an enlightened discussion with our administration as to why it's not a good idea. I just don't know how you're going to distinguish between these different kinds of offerings. And that's my difficulty, is that's going to create problems. You allow something, but you don't allow something else without any board input at all.
Chairwoman.
Trustee Banducci.
Well, and, and Trustee Meyer was, was mentioning in the first sentence there, just towards the end of the sentence there, it does say artwork. And then, Trustee Howard's talking about, how do you differentiate? And so that is a real challenge, then.
So our feedback, Mr. Martin, is we're not certain that we'd like to see this eliminated, and I would expect that we'll have further discussion if you bring it forward for a second reading.
Absolutely.
Trustee Meyer.
I wanted to empathize with the fact that you're between a rock and a hard spot.
Thank you, Trustee Meyer.
Perfect.
Da-da.
Thank you. That takes us on to our Tab Five, and Karen Rupel's going to handle that for us tonight. First reading, Eliminate Information for Transfer Student Policy 5.04.06.
Madam Chair, while she's on her way up. Yes, if we separated the two policies that we were just looking at, one we, I could pretty quickly move through, the first one on payroll stuff.
Okay.
Maybe if it came, you know, this one I could do today, for instance, but the second one was harder. Maybe if we separated, and we could at least get one moved through quite quick. So for next presentation?
Sure, sure. I, there weren't any questions on the first part of the policy, and they aren't related, they were put on the same page. And so, certainly, thank you. Welcome, Karen.
Madam Chair, trustees, I think I can make this short. We, if you recall, last spring, we wrote a new transfer policy, transfer of credit. It's 5.04.06.01, and it defines how North Idaho College reviews, accepts credit, and we were asked to write that policy by the accrediting body. It was a recommendation. This policy, it's a recommendation to eliminate, and it's part of the comprehensive policy review process, and it is a simple statement that says that a student that wants to transfer to another institution should consult that institution, and we really feel that that's advising information. And so we are just recommending that we eliminate the old policy 5.04.06. The point, I suppose I should make the point, on the Idaho State Board of Education, they're currently reviewing some new policies, or not new policies, refining some policies, and there's the new statewide general education policy that's in place. And then Policy 3V, that's the articulation and transfer policy for the entire state between all of the higher education institutions, and so that does cover the transfer and articulation agreement between the colleges.
So you're basically saying this is outdated?
It is, and it's really more an advising issue in that we're simply stating to a student that they should consult the other institution if they want to transfer there. And we now have a very comprehensive transfer policy in place that's been rewritten, and you approved last spring.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Meyer.
I'm delighted to see this. Certainly, that's been an issue from my time on the state board, about students signing up and participating here, counting on the fact that things will be transferred. So it really sounds like more of an advising issue, which I want to be sure, it sounds like we have in place, so that folks don't get partway down and go, oops. And there's been some real disappointment and heartache along the way. And certainly, the state board needs to get organized, too, because you identified here, it's not just within the state schools. I think in your new policy, you talked about neighboring schools, too, didn't you? Am I, did I read that right?
I think that, and boy, I'd have to look at the new policy again, but there's a whole list in the procedures of steps that a student should take for transfer, and I think it's a very comprehensive policy, and it was written, the registrars wrote that from the three community colleges jointly, although each school passed their own policy, they were very similarly written.
And that's music to my ears, when all three community colleges talked about, because I think as we do more technology access to, to classes, you can be taking a class from anywhere, is one of the dilemmas you have now, and accreditation of that class fitting into what we're doing. So I just think it's really important that, that as a board, we have in place all the policies we can to make it as smooth and cost-effective for our students as possible.
Yes, and I think the new statewide general education policy 3N, and then how that will feed into Policy 3V is very important. It's really, you know, a lot of work's been done on this whole gem matriculation, so...
That's the point we're all here for, right?
Yes.
Any other further questions on first reading? Karen, thank you for presenting on behalf of Dr. Burns.
Thank you.
That takes us to first reading, Tab Six, Levy Remediation Agreement. Chris Martin. And, board, keep in mind, we discussed with the city last time they were here, well, amongst ourselves, when they were here, that if it was possible to move forward on this tonight, we would do so, even though it's a first reading, in the interest of city being able to go out to bed with these projects. Chris, please proceed.
Before you do that, do we have new material handed us tonight at the board meeting, referring to that?
Trustee Meyer, there is an exhibit.
Okay.
Exhibit A is included in your packet that was on the table tonight.
Right.
It is in regards to this agreement.
Thank you. Here.
Like, there's also copies of the easements and such?
Yes. Thank you. Go right ahead.
Madam Chair, trustees, this is a follow-up from our discussion last month with the presentation by our friends in the city, Mr. Dobler and Mr. Hammond, who are here and discussed the progress to date that is occurring on the levy. At this time, we're in Phase Three of the project. Originally, in 2013, the college entered into a financing agreement with the city to split the cost of the initial certification project review. This new addendum to this agreement is in regards to Phase Three, which is the actual work to certify the levy. The total estimated project cost for the actual work to certify the levy is $816,200. The college has worked with the city, per the board's request, at our last meeting, to determine a cost-sharing agreement to support the completion of Phase Three, and ultimately gain FEMA certification for the levy. There's some supplemental data that's been provided to you tonight regarding the original easements, regarding where those easements apply to the college from a map perspective. And so, through the review of this, the college is in support of working with the city in partnership to split the cost up to $232,400 for the actual work to certify the levy at this time. The total financial impact to the college is the $232,400. The FY16 impact would be $100,000, and the FY17 impact would be $132,400.
Thank you, Chris, and, and I'd like you to stay there, because I'm certain we'll have questions, but I'd also like to very quickly refer to, ask Dr. Dunlap to comment, because you worked on these negotiations with the city administration, and if you could speak to that.
Madam Chair and trustees, Chris Martin and myself met with the city administrator and looked at the scheme of work required on the dike and the removal of the trees. And the, the cost for that project is at $816,000. We were asked by the board to try and negotiate a reduced amount rather than splitting that in half. And so, we did that, and we broke it out by task for those things that were more germane to what the college could do by itself, and what we felt was what the college should do. And so we arrived at the $232,400 as a means of compromise for our share of that cost.
Thank you for that. Trustees, comments? Mr. Howard?
I must confess, for me, this has been a little bit of a contentious project. The agreement that has been proposed, and I think drafted, I think attempts to resolve two issues. One is, how much of the dike remediation cost N I C should bear? One is how much of the dike remediation cost NIC should bear. And then also to clarify that NIC has no responsibility for maintenance and operation of the dike. That was an issue that was not agreed to by the city the last time. They felt that that was in dispute, and I think it's been clarified with this agreement. That's helpful, quite frankly. The difficulty I have still, and I appreciate the efforts that the administration's done with regard to negotiating a different cost-sharing arrangement, is that when I went to a meeting with the city last night, they were going to be doing a lot of work in kind to remove the trees now, because they felt that hiring a contractor was too expensive and removing the stumps and that sort of thing. So they're going to be doing a lot of that work in kind. And some of this, as I read this agreement, some of this money that we're providing is for removal of the trees. So I'm not sure, this ground just seems to continue to shift as far as I look at it. The other thing is that when I look at this agreement that's been presented for this evening, in paragraph 2A, it said NIC shall pay the city for the actual cost of construction of item four, exhibit A, with a total cost estimate of $132,400. And the actual cost of construction may well be more than that. And I would feel uncomfortable in supporting something that has an estimated cost of $132,400 when I see these figures shifting all the time. And so I guess I'm trying to come to some position in my own mind of what I can support here. And I think I could support this agreement, which has been proposed, with the amendment that under 2A, let's say the actual cost of construction of item four is not to exceed $132,400, so that there's not an open-ended cost of construction variable that we might have to face. And I guess the question I have is, of the $100,000 that we're supposed to provide for this year under this agreement before July 2nd, is that in our budget?
Dr. Dunlap or Chris?
Madam Chair, trustee Howard, at this time, this is budgeted into, it's planned into next fiscal year. And so we're currently planning on pursuing this in FY 2016.
July 2nd, so it takes us.
Which will be the next fiscal year, correct.
So Madam Chair, my understanding that is, that's item B on, and NIC will pay the city $100,000 on or before July 2nd, 2015. Our next year's budget is July 1st, 2015. So the question, I guess, is still, do we have the money on June 30th, and/or we still have it available on July 2nd?
Madam Chair, correct to both assertions there.
Trustee Banducci.
Actually, I'm going to ask across to trustee Howard. I want to look at something for a moment. As I look at this, I look at number four on the ledger sheet of the costs, and it's titled Opening Number 15, but it includes the remove existing concrete, some of those things there as part of the $132,000. We've got some other places that talk about the tree stumps and the trees. When you talk about this additional in-kind work, number seven, I'm sorry, number seven's also tree and debris removal. I'm looking at what we were tagged with, which was the 232.4, which was the 132.4 and the two chunks of 50. And then I'm looking at what you were just referencing, which I can't tell if that's seven. So, and we're paying, what, $50,000 out of number seven, I believe? That was 120, 288, and we were going to pay 50,000 of that. So you're not disputing the 132,400 up in number four? And you're not talking about the 50,000 below, which is kind of 12 through 17 that we had consultants and other things? What you're addressing there that you think is changing a little bit is number seven, where we were picking up approximately 50,000 of that 120,000, and that maybe the city's going to do more of that work in kind? And so that maybe we might pay less than 50?
My comment was, when I went to the meeting, the city, the report to the city was that the contractor was charging a lot of money, and so the city was deciding to do that themselves. I'm not suggesting that we change these figures at all. I'm just saying that the figures that we have agreed to pay part of seem to be shifting, and I want to make sure that, at least to the tune of $234,000, or whatever that is, I think it's right, that it doesn't change.
232.4.
232.4, yeah.
So your language that you have suggested is good language, not to exceed.
Yes.
So basically, under number seven, if the city does some more in-kind work, then their portion of cost just goes down, and we're still paying 50 grand in that one, maybe?
They still have to pay for it, because they got to pay for their people, but it's not out of pocket to them.
No, I was just curious as to what your thoughts were on it. That's why. Yeah, just what your position was on that.
Board, any further questions on this agreement that Dr. Dunlap and Vice President Chris Martin has negotiated with the city of Coeur d'Alene? So now, in the question of if we're willing to, with those changes directed by us, and if the city agrees to them, are we willing to bypass the second reading so the city has an opportunity to go out to bid on some of these projects before they miss the summer season?
Can you clarify one more time exactly what changes we're making?
Yeah. I think the language that he has suggested is responsible language. I don't know what the rest of the board feels about that, but not to exceed the cost figure that they have provided us. We want to make sure that's it.
So it's item A?
Yeah, specifically, what I would suggest is, it'd read as follows. NIC shall pay the city for the actual cost of construction of item four not to exceed $132,400, that would be added. And then, and then you can, or item four, exhibit A, not to exceed $132,400. And then you strike out with a total estimate of $132,400.
Yeah. Check out that estimate you don't like.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Chris, is that making sense?
Absolutely.
Okay. Board, any comments on that, concerns?
Chris, at the end of the day, it's, they're estimating it's $816,000, give or take some change what they're being able to do in time. We're asked to pay one-third of that as good neighbors and as good stewards of this. And if we get our language in there saying not to exceed, so we, and if they run over, it's on theirs, I don't see any issue at all.
Thank you, Mr. Nielsen. So Board, then, what is your appetite for bypassing the second reading and giving the administration our terms and asking them to move forward with the city? And I would like that in the form of a motion, if you're in agreeance.
Comment here is, I think that Mr. Howard has been in the middle of this and understands legal terminology. If Mr. Howard is willing to make a motion, then I would second him, but I don't feel comfortable unless he's the one that makes the motion.
It's kind of like twisting the knife in, isn't it? In the effort of trying to get this rolling, I would make the motion that we approve the document entitled Amendment 1 to Agreement for Financing of the City of Coeur d'Alene Floodworks Certification Process Project, and authorize the signature of that document. And.
With amendment?
Pardon?
With the adjustment.
With the changes of inserting not to exceed $132,400 after the word exhibit A on the first line of sub-paragraph 2A. That's my motion.
And I appreciate your motion. Do I have a second on your motion?
Second.
So now, discussion. Mr. Lyons, you are our attorney, a highly respected attorney. Do you concur with those changes?
Well, I know what the changes are. I've recorded them. We can make the changes to the amendment without any problem. So yes, I don't have any issue with that.
Thank you very much. We have a motion, yes, under discussion.
The discussion section, the same section that we're pondering, 2A. As we read on then, NIC is going to be doing a C, either on July 2nd, the amount of money we're not to exceed, 132,000, we're going to have to pay either on July 2nd, 2016, or upon completion of the work, whichever comes later.
Right.
NIC is going to be doing improvements outline, 26. Again, the funding for that is reasonable, available. We can meet that obligation.
Chris?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Board. Thank you for your serious effort on that topic. That moves us on to Dr. Dunlap. He has a quick report on Four Corners.
Madam Chair, I would like to solicit some input from the trustees with regard to that project. Over time, there had been some discussion between the city and the college about the conveyance of a portion of the right-of-way that abuts the college along Northwest Boulevard. And that's a portion of a larger project, which the city refers to as the Four Corners Project. And recently, they have been soliciting input on possible uses of that land. When the college had originally discussed with the city the use of that land, there was an understanding that the conveyance would be conditional upon the use of that land for educational or recreation purposes. And so I would like for the administration to pursue a written agreement with the city that articulates the desire and the previous commitment, the verbal commitment, from the city to convey that land once it has been conveyed to that city, or, excuse me, yes, once it's been conveyed to the city and then subsequently would be conveyed to us. And so I'm soliciting any input that the trustees may have with regard to that property and/or an agreement that we can reach with the city.
Board, how do you feel about a directive to Dr. Dunlap to pursue an agreement, a written agreement with the city on the BLM property? Trustee Howard.
I not only support, but encourage it, quite frankly. My concern all along with regard to this property is that BLM is dealing with the city, and we are sort of a distant third party standing on the sidelines. And there have been discussions about this strip of land along Northwest Boulevard between Hubbard and River, I think that's right?
Yes.
Which was contiguous to NIC's property, and then there are some houses in there that ultimately we may or may not purchase, but some of which we already own. And so what's going to happen to that strip of land? And the city has said, well, you're involved, but I, when we, they have to have a plan submitted to BLM, as I understand it, which includes the anticipated use. And what we have so far is sort of a generic for educational recreational purposes. Well, that may end up being something other than educational purposes. It might be something that we don't even have a hand in designing, quite frankly, because we're not, we don't have any rights. And so I would like to see something that's enforceable, that would be in the agreement that goes to BLM. Because my anticipation is that whatever goes in the agreement to BLM is what's going to ultimately happen if the federal government ever conveys that land to the city. And I would like to see NIC's interest protected in writing so that there is no misunderstanding in the future about that strip of land between River and Hubbard being something that is for NIC's use for educational purposes. And that might include other educational institutions, because that's part of the, excuse me, the educational corridor or the campus that we're constructing here. My problem is, it has been very, very loose and very ill-defined and unenforceable in terms of our having any rights in that area at all.
Thank you, that input. Trustee Meyer was first up. I'll come right back to you.
Thank you. Just following up on, about how much land are we talking about?
Acres, why should we?
Mm-hmm.
It's just that strip. I don't recall the acreage. We could, you measure it out and whatever it is.
It would be helpful for me to know how far is far on.
Well, it's between Hubbard and.
I understand that.
Garden, yeah.
When we bring back the PUD next meeting.
Oh, we get to look at it.
We'll have that on the map.
That'll be dandy. That would help great, thank you.
And trustee Banducci? You had a comment?
Well, two things. One is, I'm wholeheartedly in agreement with trustee Howard. I've wanted to see this formalized off the discussions, to be truthful. And we've already seen some changes in leadership at the city level, and there will continue to be changes in leadership. And this has been over a course of years and may continue to take some time to be fully realized. So I think that's, not only to formalize it, because it's the right thing to do, but it protects us, too, because those that we have working relationships and agreements with now may not be at the table with us in the future, and may not recall or remember or have been party to some of our understandings.
Those would be my exact comments as well. And it certainly has nothing to do with our trust and confidence in city leadership. It's just simply business, and you're right, the players change.
Yeah, I'm not trying to take shots at them or anything.
Right, sure. No, it's a responsible thing to do. And so it sounds to me like the board wants to give the president a directive to go forth and negotiate on our behalf and bring something back in writing.
But hopefully, that the goal is to clarify our undivided sole interest in that area between those landmarks. I mean, there may be something that comes up in the negotiation that would change that approach, but that should be our initial, that should be our initial goal, is an undivided total right to dedicate that property to educational purposes.
That was the understanding, that we've all had those discussions with past leadership. When Troy Timson was here a couple of months ago, he reaffirmed that was the city's understanding as well, but you're absolutely right.
He's gone.
Let's get it, no, Troy still works with the city. He's just not the city administrator. So you're right, let's get it in writing. I think it's good business. Trustee Meyer?
So, and that, before the identifies, you know, right-of-ways along Northwest Boulevard have different dimensions sometimes. Dimensions, not dementia. But part of that will be, so if you had the description and you had a map to show us, I think it'd pull together the pieces, better understand who's in charge.
Yeah. Thank you for that. All right, is that clear?
It is, thank you.
Thank you.
And I didn't mean to mean Troy was like gone, gone. I just mean in that capacity.
Sure, yeah. No, I get it. So that moves us on to our information item. We're going to ask, Chris is assigned to this, and he'll give us a great update, but we also have two trustees that serve as our liaisons, trustee Meyer and trustee Nielsen. So I hope you will chime in at the appropriate time and give us your feedback.
And again, don't we have new material given to us tonight?
Yes.
Madam Chair, trustees, thank you for this opportunity to give an update tonight on the current technical education facility. Madam Chair, you are absolutely correct. I want to thank trustee Meyer and trustee Nielsen for their involvement and their guidance and their great questions. And they have added a whole lot to this process and really challenged us from the start to the finish, and I think that that has helped us get to a much better end product, so.
Challenge a kind word that you meant?
Challenge is absolutely a kind word. Absolutely a kind word. Tonight, we have a brief update, and I just want to acknowledge some members of the team who are here tonight. John Young, our owners representative, is with us tonight to provide answers to any questions regarding constructability. Doug Anderson, our division chair for Trade and Industry is here, has so much valuable input in this process, as has his faculty, as well as Rayo Anderson with the Development Office.
Thank you.
Just to give a brief timeline, we started this project in July 2014. I think it was my second day on the job. We talked through this project, and the board gave approval for the project and the initial financing plan. Next up in August, there was a great roundtable discussion that was. Next up in August, there was a great roundtable discussion that was assembled to talk about costing this project with local contractors and engineers to really help kind of shape the process from the very beginning. October 2014, we selected Architects West as the architectural and engineering firm. Young Construction Group was selected November 2014 as the owner's rep. From that point forward, we've been involved in eight planning and design workshops with faculty and with end-users across campus. And those have been just really valuable collaborative times to really help shape this project to exactly what the college needs, to not only meet the need today, but also in the next five years. In January 2015, we entered a modification with the city of Rathrum, negotiations to modify our agreement for annexation. On January 14th, we met with the Board Committee for the CTE facility to talk about the initial plan. They challenged us. They gave us some great things to review and go back and rework our plan. And we met with them again early in February. And so that, just to update you where we are today and what's occurred. The proposed project as it stands now, and you received a packet today with a summary of this information as well as the initial floor plan, as developed, it's 110,625 square feet. It includes welding, computer-aided drafting, both mechanical and technical, the industrial mechanics program, machining CNC, diesel, automotive repair, and automotive collision. Just looking at our five-year enrollment trends, current enrollment in these programs today is at 230 students in each of these programs. And through the guidance of the committee, they have really helped us refine the scope and go back and really challenge our enrollment trends over the next five years to what we project and what we anticipate being the enrollment in these programs. And currently, we're projecting 321 students in these programs. And the facility was designed to accommodate this growth. One constant conversation regarding the development of this project has been, are we truly meeting the economic needs of North Idaho and specifically Cootie County? This has been a continual conversation. It's been very good for us to have on the college side to kind of go back and re-ask the questions, challenge the numbers, go back and do our math again, make sure that we're really sharpening our pencils here. And as you can see, this is, the expected manufacturing growth in North Idaho is one that is on the rise. One quote that I think is pertinent to this project is from Olivia Metz of the Department of Labor. Manufacturing and trades employment is expected to be a fast-growing part of our region's economy. Job growth for manufacturing in North Idaho is projected to rise 15% faster than the average for all other industries between 2012 and 2022. So on behalf of Vice President Lita Burns, I'm going to speak briefly to the instructional focus and direct any questions that come over my head to Doug Anderson, who's here representing instruction tonight. But we've had eight planning and design meetings with faculty. They've been collaborative and they've been focused on innovation. And not being an academician to sit in these meetings and see faculty work through how they would reprogram and retool each of their programs and how they instruct has just been a very rewarding experience to get to see. And our faculty have really stepped up and really honestly rethought and re-engineered their delivery. The focus on this project has been flexibility and functionality to meet future needs and to be able to adapt to needs as those change. Faculty have been overwhelmingly supportive of the process. And one thing that I think has been a true win in this whole project, as Trustee Banducci mentioned earlier, is just a further aligning and collaboration with K-Tech. And so faculty have worked closely with their peers at K-Tech. Doug Anderson has worked really closely with the leadership at K-Tech to make sure that every opportunity we have to make this project a win-win for both institutions has been a focus. And if I can just speak to one piece of that, the computer-aided drafting and design program, that was not on the initial list. And the reason it's there is because it fits so closely with the programs that we're teaching now. There's a real synergy to those programs that are moving. We didn't want to detach those. But the second piece of that is there's a real opportunity for dual credit with K-Tech, with the CAD programs. On the construction considerations, I'm going to ask that John field any questions that I may not be able to field here. But the real consideration has been to deliver a facility that meets our current and projected needs and eliminates our need for leased space. Again, very functional and industrial facility focus that really trains students in an environment that they can expect when they leave NIC and they're out in industry. We added extended design time to really focus on efficient utilizations of space. The next step is going to be a real focus on the structural and engineering process to create further efficiency and cost savings and also phase our construction. Phasing leads great into the fiscal considerations. The total estimated project cost as it's presented tonight is $20.6 million. This is a very conservative estimate. We've, that's been a theme tonight, very conservative estimates. Currently, the total project cost, hard and soft costs, is $186 per square foot. In August, when we assembled that roundtable of experts in construction and engineering, their estimated project cost, total project cost for this facility was between $203 and $213 a square foot. We're continuing to work to drive that cost down, working with our design team, working with faculty to question every need as we go through this process. The actual construction cost per square foot, the hard construction cost, is at $152 a square foot currently. Phase one of this project would include everything with the exception of auto collision and auto repair. And the cost for phase one currently estimated is at $15 million. Phase two would be auto collision and auto repair coming in at a cost, estimated cost of $5 million. So total project of $20 million, we're proposing this to be completed with no increase in taxes, primarily due to external funding sources. So the additional amount needed will be raised through grants and external fundraising. The college is currently applying for a $2.5 million Economic Development Administration grant that we will submit for in spring 2015. And the foundation is currently conducting a feasibility study, excuse me, a feasibility study to determine our probable success rate in community fundraising. So in collaboration with the committee, the Board Committee for the CTE facility, their recommendation was that we complete design for the entire project, total project, including automotive. We move forward with phase one, which is everything with the exception of the automotive collision and automotive repair programs, and that we complete phase two pending the outcome of external funding. You've received in your packet tonight the latest and greatest layout design. At this time, I would stand for questions with myself and my colleagues who are here tonight.
Thank you. Before we take questions, I would like to have comments from trustees Nielsen and Meyer on your liaison duties. Thank you, Trustee Nielsen.
Couple of great lunches, lots of discussions. The first meeting was, first couple of meetings we had, there, we, I think that we were a lot farther away from our initial instructions to where we wanted to get to. And to the character of Chris and to John Young and Lita, I mean, I have to give them the same accolades that were given there is that we saw what we perceived was a rigid way of looking at this, that after we went through a series of discussions and debates and started doing all the current role, where our growth was coming from, what industry's saying, comparing to other CTE centers across the countryside, we started taking some square footage out and whatever, and it was an incredible experience. First two meetings were awful. I just said, I don't, you know, I never had this much trouble trying to bring people together, but by the end of it, it was an incredible meeting. And, you know, the thing that, if you just go back to what we passed last year for $15 million for a building that would come alongside K-Tech that would be able to do what we needed, we really have done that. So the perception is, is we're on for $15 to $20 million that we've went and asked for another $5 million. No, what we did is that we made sure that the five-year forecast and for future growth was built into it. And $1.5 million is updated equipment that's needed to be able to bring this up to a state-of-the-art facility so that they can start today and not have to move used lifts in the auto side to bring all this equipment there that maybe has been outdated, that they're going to do an update. So when you take the $15 million and you take the additional growth and the equipment that's needed, it's really right to where we needed to be at. And with the confidence of Joe on this EDA grant and the commitment and Rayel's been, I don't, she's not here right now, but Rayel, yeah, Rayel has the support of the foundation that the 2.5, both in there, take that out. We're only really looking for, you know, for something in the neighborhood of $3.5 million to be able to fund all the rest of that and we're done. So it was an incredible experience. John Young is a true gentleman, the most patient man I've ever seen, probably next to Chris. And it was a great experience because I think that when we got all done and looked at what it looked like and how it's going to run in parallel with K-Tech, I think that as we get done with this, we're going to go back five years from now and says, K-Tech was a site, this facility's world-class, this will become an economic tool for Cootie County. And I believe that we're right now at the foundation of doing something not just good, but incredible for this community, so.
Great, thank you. Trustee Meyer?
What more can I say after that? One of the things, Chris, clarification, and then I'll make some more comments. In the material you handed to us, you described the square footage cost, currently total project cost, second page, the second paragraph. Project cost per square foot to be $186.56, but your slide showed a price of $152.83 a square foot.
Yes, the difference is, this is the total, $186 is total project cost, hard cost, soft cost, equipment. Total project, move-in, that's the total. The construction cost is the 150 that was referenced.
And I think as the public gets to hear some of these numbers, we need to sort that out a bit because as Trustee Nielsen mentioned, some of this equipment cost was in our list of costs. And we said, now wait, that's different than construction cost.
Absolutely.
So in identifying that, we as a committee felt like some of the equipment costs, there's an opportunity to partner with the community because there's no point in building this building and then not having state-of-the-art equipment for folks to train on. Another theme that John and I visited about was construction cost versus reducing the footage, square footage, because that doesn't do us any good if we reduce the square footage. We frank the cost, but we haven't delivered what we all asked to have delivered. So through the magic of his sharp pencil, an ongoing sharp pencil, we'll ask him to keep looking at that. I think during our discussion, the committee, both on behalf of the Board, reminded our staff that we need to use this building as much as possible, which was as many hours a day. And that's a dilemma because if the consumer doesn't want to buy what we have, it doesn't matter what we've built, that the number of hours a day, particularly if we can flip-flop with K-Tech, both of their equipment, their instructors, the classroom time, Saturdays and Sundays, using technology, there's just lots of ways. We need to be really creative in what we're asking the administration to do. So all in all, I think it was exciting. It'll probably get more exciting when the real numbers come in. But I think we're talking about a completion date in 16?
That's correct.
Rec center is 17, 16 for this project. So 12 months from now, we're all closed in, we're all ready to get equipment moved in. And folks begin classes in July or September? Oh, okay, I'll give you 60 days there. But anyway, for students to begin in a new facility with good equipment. And there's no doubt about it, we'll be asking the community to help out in various ways with some of the state-of-the-art equipment that some of these programs need and faculty to help us do it. So I think you hit the head, nail on the head. That's a good construction term to make this successful.
Very good. Thank you, Trustee Meyer. Board, now's the appropriate time to ask your liaisons and Chris and Dr. Dunlap questions about this project. Trustee Banducci?
I have a couple. The first one, maybe more, I don't know if it's to Chris or to President Dunlap, but my recollection, and maybe this was, maybe I'm not accurate, but I thought there was another $1 million that we were going to try to go after. And I couldn't remember if that was the state or from the Albertsons Foundation, that there was some other money that we were possibly pursuing for this.
Can you speak to that?
Madam Chair, Trustee Banducci, I've been working with the Albertsons Foundation and I will continue to work with the Albertsons Foundation. And in fact, I'll be meeting with one of their representatives tomorrow. And so, yes, we'll continue to work with them.
Sorry, I didn't mean if that was out of turn. I just knew we were having some discussions.
No, hopefully they're watching and they know that Joe wants a check. We always appreciate their support.
We do, absolutely. Another thing, as you were mentioning, we originally designed this project to house seven programs. And you were talking about incorporating the CAD program because it was a fit and it made sense. And I'm thinking of some of the other programs we have, and one of the ones that jumps out at me is the Millwright program. Is that a program that should have made sense in this? Or is it, where are we at with that?
That program is included.
Okay. And under which category?
Industrial mechanics.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure I understood. Okay. Is there something else included into that category? Or is that what Millwright were calling is just industrial mechanics? Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Or, Trustee Howard?
I suspect like all of us, we're just really anxious to see this done. But the agony of the process still has some questions, some lingering questions for me. When I look at the handout, it was the executive summary, I see that we look at a current enrollment for the different programs and anticipate the projected enrollment over five years. And what we've done is we've reduced the square foot per student for many of those programs. And I thought we were crowded in our present location. Can somebody help me understand that?
Absolutely. Madam Chair, Trustee Howard, as we went through these, and went through these with faculty in each section of this, this is where the sharpener of the pencil really came down to. And there's two pieces here. We're comparing lab space to lab space in this analysis. And in some of our labs currently, going forward, we've broken out lab space and there's actually instruction space for certain items such as on the schematic, the pneumatic lab, the electronics lab, some of those other labs that are going to be shared space. And so what's not reflected here in the projected square footage are those new instructional spaces that we can use for every program, not specific just to one of those programs. And currently, as we teach this, a lot of the things like pneumatics and some of the other areas, they have spaces within their lab where they teach that now. In the new design, working with faculty, there's a new section that's shared by all. And so that's not directly attributed to a program, they're shared spaces.
Thank you. That helps. I have another question.
Certainly.
You also talk about current enrollment. And when we started talking about our need some time ago, there was a lot of discussion about that we had a waiting list in a number of these programs. And where we, we have a current enrollment and we projected out five years. How does the, do we still have waiting lists? And I'm sure you took that into consideration as you projected this out five years. But are we going to have an immediate use of some of this space because of the waiting list? Are we going to be able to accommodate the waiting list, I guess, is my question.
It's designed so that we can accommodate the waiting list that we've had in the past. Currently today, not all these programs have the waiting list that they had a year ago. And we've worked with industry and worked with our industry advocacy groups to see what that trend is and what our future needs are going to be. But the idea is that we would be able to accommodate student demand as well as industry demand with this space.
Trustee Meyer?
And those are good questions that you're right, Ken, we pondered with the team. And one of the things was, once you've met the waitlist bubble, then is this, do we need that much space forevermore? And so part of the design is a flexibility was to say, yep, we can do a whole lot right now with some of these issues, partly out of projection of employment. Some things will increase and others will not. And so like you said, the lab space versus classroom space can in fact be really flexible. Because I think the crystal ball is cloudier than in. because I think the crystal ball is cloudier than any of us would like to admit. And part of a community college role is nimble, responsive, and deals with the community local issues. So I think we're trying to do that. Any more comments on?
Thank you, trustee Nielsen.
As, as we reviewed, we saw what Doug and his team and Lita put together, which is, and it's almost like that you, you just take some floor space and you start sticking stuff in there, and you have in the diesel tech program, you've got engines laying all over with really no specific purpose of where they're going, where they're stored, how they're moved in and out and whatever. And when you start with a clean box like this, and then they go in and they lay the machinery out, they lay the dynos where they're supposed to be, and they design storage capacities where they're going vertical with it instead of having it all over the floor, I think, Ken, you'll find out that, that when you walk through there, you feel like it's twice the square footage for the amount of students that was there before because I think it's more organized and a lot better off. We saw that when, when you go to some of these other facilities where you say, gosh, it's the same square footage we have, but why does ours look so cluttered? It's because there's a lot of stuff that doesn't have a place to go, so.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions, board?
I would just like to comment to, first of all, to the entire team, and then specifically to our two trustees that served as liaisons for our board. I really, really can see the value in having you involved in the process and working on our behalf, which we sometimes disagree, but I really see it, and I hope you being part of this process experienced that for yourself, how important it is for the board to be involved in, in major projects and, and be the voice of the board and work with the team to come to the, to the best result. For me, I really appreciate all the time and effort you both put into this. I certainly do trust your decision-making, and I couldn't be more grateful to you and the team. So now we're at a place where we can move forward, and that's very exciting. I don't believe there was a motion associated, this was all just information. And so, thank you very much. Yes, trustee Meyer?
When do we next have you tell us what's happening?
We're working with the team now on the next phase, and as we get to the engineering and also get to the elevations, which I know we had talked about, what materials we're going to use in the structural and the constructability piece of that, we will definitely seek your feedback and reconvene with the committee.
So maybe each, each month it would seem to me we ought to have a report on, you may not have a whole lot of materials, but just an update because I think the community also is interested in knowing how we're doing.
Well, at least for the next year, we should have a standing agenda item, and then maybe even longer. Once we open the doors and launch, we're going to want to know what's going on. So that'll, that'll give.
I have a real, Kevin Jester's here, so he does an incredible job of giving you three-dimensional pictures and, and things that you can really bring it to life. I mean, this is incredible when you just look at it from a blueprint layout, but when you get a chance to see it upright, two stories, and when they showed me this big green area that looked like a soccer field in the middle, I thought we could save money by putting some roof over it. And they said, Ron, don't be old, give them some green space and some common area, and after seeing what they were, what Kevin had designed into it and taken that into the whole life of the student, I think they've done an unbelievable job to give the best of all, which is a, a look of a, something a little bit nicer than K-Tech, but it's still industrial. And it's, it's going to be nicer than any of the places any of these students go to work, trust me.
Well, they need to have a positive experience before they go to your shop.
That's right, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. And that takes us on to the board chair report. I just want to blend my report with the remarks of the Good Order and ask you all to chime in. My report is brief, I just want to talk a little bit about our trip to Boise. I'd like to compliment Dr. Dunlap and his administrative team for their fantastic presentation to Senate Ed, J-FAC. You just did a wonderful job on our behalf representing the college, and we're waiting until March 9th, I think was the first date you gave us, to see if they thought the same, right?
That's correct.
And so it was a good trip, I enjoyed it. It's always good to get with our administrative team, travel with them, and, and work on a common goal of advancing NIC. Board, any comments on your trip to Boise? Or anything else? Yes, trustee Meyer?
Just one following up on the, the visiting in Boise. Kudos to Ken over the last chairmanship time working with the boards, presidents of the other community colleges. That's been a campaign of mine that we need to be, and we are more effective as a threesome. And that's continuing, and I would, I felt we saw the results. The three presidents presented to the Ed Committee, House Committee, and I think you took the lead, President Dunlap, on presenting to J-FAC, and then each of the presidents did. And so at least from what I heard amongst the legislators was, gee, community colleges have their act together. There's not a food fight amongst them. That, for differences, that's good, but there are also specialty items that we can, are doing. So I was, I thought the time was worthwhile. We're aware, we spent taxpayers' money to do that, but I think we're going to get that back in other ways that, that's worth doing. You missed a real great event.
Mr. Banducci?
Just one observation, I agree with everything trustee Meyer said. It was good to see the three college presidents presenting together, and I think that was very well received. But the thing that caught my attention is when Senator Cameron questioned how much junior colleges were getting versus the four-year colleges in the K through 12 as far as the percentages in the governor's budget, and when he said, four years are getting this and two years are getting this, and, you know. So I, I think that, that was encouraging to hear him recognize that maybe we could get a little more of the pie.
Yeah, he saw the inequity, or at least he spoke to the inequity.
He did.
That was good.
That was encouraging.
Mr. Howard?
Called the budget guy up and kind of asked him a few questions.
Yeah, yeah. Comments?
No.
Anything for the Good Order, board? It's light, oh, yes.
Yep, one last one, and that was Good Order, and that was to talk about our next board meeting here in March, but then in April, our board meeting is in Sandpoint. We're starting earlier because it's in Sandpoint. And I would like to suggest, if the board agrees, that we board get up there even earlier in order to do some sort of open house to connect with that community while we're up there, both the local political folk as well as students. It's our time to be in Sandpoint that I don't suppose will happen again for a while. My understanding is that meeting will be recorded just as this one is, and therefore run available to this community after we complete the board meeting, just as we do with this one.
Trustee Meyer?
And a suggestion might be is that we prepare for a full-fledged CTE presentation because they'll perceive Rathrum as being closer and easier to get to for their students that are going to come down and get the skills to take it back up to Sandpoint. So I think you could probably, with the help of maybe the foundation and people that are familiar with the industries there, is probably get a pretty good turnout from industry to come and see what's going on with the next, the best career in technical education campus in the state of Idaho, so.
So as an agenda item, we'd like to see a CTE report.
Yeah, and we might even do some education by saying that some of the auto, diesel, some of these people attend there and get a chance to see the full presentation about what we're doing.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Trustee Meyer's idea of an open house, is that something you think you and your staff could make work, where maybe there were some light refreshments and a welcome of a little time for us to socialize?
Yes, we'll put that together.
All right. Trustee Banducci?
I'm just, I like what Ron's suggesting too, and Judy, that's great. And the other thing is, you know, harnessing that, those folks up there, when we went to get the money for the lab and stuff like that, that community was very generous and felt a partnership in that and has supported. And they may come alongside us as we're doing this capital campaign and these other things, and they may feel more included and part of that. So I like that idea.
Well, I like the idea too, and I will tell you, one of our strongest donors unfortunately passed away, and, and I know a few of us will be attending her services, Gretchen Heller, former mayor, just a strong supporter of the lab at NIC in Sandpoint. So it's a, it's a great opportunity to get up there and, and meet with our Sandpoint people, so I like it. Anything else for the Good Order? We get to go home. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.